Good morning. Call to order the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, June 12th, and I would like to wish our very capable clerk a happy birthday today.
Thank you.[15.12][15.12](applause) I'm a big fan of birthdays, especially my own.[20.23][20.23](laughter)
With that, your great privilege today is to call the roll. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Boujack.
President.
Vice Chair Burl.
Here.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Here.
Faber.
Here.
Halston.
Here.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
LaGrand. McLeod.
Here.
Merchant. Morales.
Here.
Morse.
Here.
Oliver King. Pakla.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Sparks.
Here and present.
Steck.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Chair Green.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 members present, four absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the invocation. I will call on Commissioner Halston.
Good morning, Chair Green and Commissioners. As we begin our day together, I just want to pause for a minute and give thanks for the great country that we live in, for the people that we serve with, and for the opportunity and the responsibility that we have to lead with integrity. And it's a responsibility that I don't take lightly. And June is here, people are getting out and about, everything is in full color. I love my gardening. But June is also a wonderful month for us to remember the weight of the gift of service. If you remember with me, D-Day happened in June when our troops had to storm the beach to protect our freedom. This Saturday, we celebrate the 250th anniversary of our United States Army, and we honor those who've gone before and worn that uniform. And on this very day, I believe in the year of 1987, Katie may have to correct me, President Reagan stood in front of a group of people that were very un-unified, asking them to be unified, when he asked Gorbachev to take down the wall. And so that kind of courage still speaks to us today. And I think it's very easy for us to focus on what separates us, but I believe that our differences, the backgrounds we bring, the experiences, our perspectives, all of those things make us stronger. They make us more compassionate and more complete as a whole. So as we open today's meeting, I'd like to carry that spirit, not only for bold leadership, but also for humble service, seeking wisdom, valuing life at every stage, and helping us to remember that it's not just a political, public office, but it's serving people. So with that, let's pray. Father, I thank you for this day, for the gift of it. We don't want to take that for granted. We thank you for the freedoms that you have given us to enjoy and that you've placed us to be good stewards of with your gifts, to serve with honesty and compassion and courage. We are grateful for those who've come before us, for the men and women who led with conviction and made sacrifices so that we can enjoy the life that we live today. May we honor them not just in word, but also in action. Please guide us, give us eyes to see beyond ourselves, ears to hear one another, and hearts that reflect your justice and mercy. Help us pursue not just what's popular and easy, but what is true and what is right. And if there's disagreement, may we find respect. If division, may we sow peace. And above all, may we honor you with our lives, and may we bless the people that we've been entrusted to represent. We thank you and we love you in your name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[257.64][257.64](laughter)
All right, I'm moving down here for our, one of our special orders of business for the morning. It is June, which is Men's Health Month, and you'll notice that several of us are wearing blue today to recognize that. Beau Torres was supposed to be with us this morning to help recognize Men's Health Month, but is dealing with a medical emergency, we just found out. So I've invited my vice chairs up here, and I'd like to read this proclamation from the County Board of Commissioners. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men experiencing the lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating both healthcare providers and the public about the importance of maintaining healthy lifestyle choices, as well as the early detection of male health issues, will help reduce mortality rates from disease. And whereas men who understand the value of preventative health and extending their lifespan and strengthening their roles as productive, family-oriented members of society are more likely to participate in health screenings. And whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle serve as role models for their children, leading to happier, healthier lives for the next generation. And whereas Men's Health Month highlights a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. And whereas the citizens of Kent County are encouraged to participate in Men's Health Month and to seek opportunities to raise awareness about the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and routine medical checkups, be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 2025 as Men's Health Month in Kent County, Michigan. Thank you. And if I forget, at the end of the meeting, I'd like to wish all of the Kent County Fathers a Happy Father's Day this weekend. We'll move on to Agenda Item 5B, which is our special order of business, the financial overview, from Jeff Dodd, who is our Fiscal Services Director, and I will hand it over to Jeff. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, staff. So get ready, sit back. We have a 100-page document here to go through, so we'll go through in depth here. No, I'm kidding. We have about 13 pages, and I'll highlight those specifically. You should have a handout with those specific pages copied. The entire document is on our webpage, so we didn't feel like we should print a 100-page document for everybody. So the financial overview is annually prepared by my deputy Marvin Benortwick. Its primary use is for our rating agency calls. They ask most of these questions during our annual rating calls, so we like to give them the answers ahead of time, so they can just ask specific follow-up questions. So it's a very good document for them. And then we also have to file an annual continuing disclosure statement, so we convert this to that document. And that gets posted to Emma, which is the bond rating site where all of our bonds are posted. So those are the two primary purposes, as well as the financial overview for obviously the readers in Kent County. So starting on page eight through 12 of the document is an economic profile of Kent County. Specifically, on page 10, I'd like to point out something the rating agencies look at quite a bit, is the per capita income growth. And you can see on page 10, $78,662 is Kent County's average, which is ahead of the state by about $90,000, and shows great growth since 2,122%. So that's one of the key metrics that the rating agencies look for. We've seen great growth in that area. Pages 13 to 18 talk about our taxation. Looking at page 15, which you should have a copy of, shows the growth in both state equalized value and taxable value. You can see we've had very strong growth the last several years, 13.3% in SEV in '24, and 9.1% in taxable value change. So great changes in our taxable value, not only this year, but the last several years. Moving on to page 19, state revenue sharing, I'd like to point out, 14.1 budgeted in '24. We budgeted 15.299 in '25. It's about an 8% increase, and that's consistent with the state's budget recommendations. Moving on to page 20, I'd like to talk about our legal debt margin. We're allowed by statute 10% of SEV to borrow. You can see we're at 1.2%, with over $4 billion of capacity in our legal debt margin. Not that I'm recommending ever getting to that range, but in the middle of the page, you can see the gross debt of $564 million. Most of that is self-supported by other sources, like the Revenue, Drain Commissioner, things like that. The net direct debt is $53.6 million, so overall, very, very low debt profile for Kent County. Moving on to page 24, talk a little bit about pension and OPEB funding. There's different ways to measure pension and OPEB, depending if you're using GASP or the actuarial valuation. In this report, we use the fiduciary net position. You can see $95 million of liability for our pension system, 91.72% funded. That was for '23. We just got our '24 report last week, and that has gone up to 95% funded with a $60.7 million of liability. So good progress there over the last year. Moving on to OPEB on page 28, you can see $9 million of net OPEB liability or 85.66% funded. And again, we just got our new reports. We're up to 93.95% funded with 3.9 of liability. So great progress on our OPEB as well, which is our retiree healthcare plan. Moving on to page 32 is our cash position. You can see $591, just under $591 million. It does show a decrease from last year, but that's primarily related to $53 million in spending of our ARPA proceeds. So that's the notation for the drop there, but very good cash positions throughout our various funds of the county. Another thing the rating agencies like to look at is our contracts. They want to know if we're, how we're doing with all of our union contracts. Page 37 shows that everyone has been settled. We signed four- and five-year contracts. There is some wage reopeners this year, but the next expiration is 12 of '27 for most, for some of the unions, and some of them are 12 of '28. So that's on page 37. Page 38, we're going to talk about the general fund just briefly. You can see our actual results in 2024. The second column from the right, we put $5.5 million into reserves with a fiscal or fund balance end of year of $113.8 million. We typically will budget a break-even budget, so, but historically, we've always done better than that. So the book shows $113.8 at the end there, but we anticipate ending stronger than that break-even point. Okay, moving on to page 40. This is our debt service as a percent of general fund expenditures. Again, another measure they look at, a very low 3.1%, which is very, very low for a county of our size. Moving on to page 42, DTANs. So this is where we collect our delinquent tax notices, our delinquent taxes from our Treasurer's Department. We're trying to build that fund balance up where we can potentially self-fund these in the future. So you can see we ended the year at $16.7 million in fund balance in our delinquent tax note accounts, and that's due to Treasurer's Office doing a great job collecting those Page 48, we'll jump to there. It's our capital fund. You can see we have just about $67 million in fund balance for capital projects, and that's all assigned either to current projects or future projects with our strategic capital line item, which has roughly about $43-ish million in there right now. So very good, healthy fund, or capital fund, funding plan. The rating agencies always like to see our capital assets being maintained, and we do a great job here at Kent County maintaining those. Page 50 and 51, we'll finish with that. This is the airport. We always keep an eye on them as they have a large debt profile. You can see on page 51, they have 3.75% debt service coverage, which is a very good ratio and above what is recommended. And we continue to see strong operating revenues and net revenues for the airport. The remaining pages, page 58 to 70, are our policies, which they like to see updated, which we've been doing. And then recent news is page 71 to the end. And with that, we happily answer any questions. Sorry, that was very quick.
No, that was great. I'll open up for questions. I just wanted to comment, I see the Board of Commissioners listed as a bargaining unit, which, we are, but not in the labor sense, a bargaining unit here. So any questions or comments for Jeff? Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, thanks for the overview. I appreciate the condensed version too, although I did look through that other version. The net positions that we have for pension and OPEB seem very high, right? You talked about the fact that those are really good positions. Do you have a sense of how we compare to other counties or other municipal units? My sense is that we're very much higher than those others.
Very much higher. I would say we're probably in the top 90, 95th percentile of most other pension and VBA, retiree healthcare systems, yeah.
That's great. And do you, I mean, you know, obviously, other than your fantastic leadership and the great work of the county, is there anything that we do particularly different than other municipalities?
I think we've done a great job keeping ahead of all of the assumptions. So we do a five-year assumption study, basically. They look at all of our demographics, so one of the things they look at is mortality. If people are living longer, obviously, our pensions pay out longer. So we've done a great job every five years of updating those assumptions, which keeps our plan current. Another one is the interest rate of return. A lot of plans were 8%, 9%, we were never that high. I think we were around seven and a quarter, but we kept lowering that to six and a half as return assumptions continued to drop. So we do a great job keeping that. We've always funded the plan to 100% of the required contributions, even though for a long time, the plan was way overfunded. We can, some other entities quit funding at that point and gave away a lot of benefits because it was a free benefit at that point because they're overfunded. The county never did that, very conservative. So then lastly, we have a very conservative approach to long-term investments. We're a fiduciary, so in the pension, Lindsey and Stan, I think, are the pension members, they can attribute that. That board is very consistent in the process.
Great, thank you so much.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. Jeff, thanks for being here today. Thanks for the information. Mine's not a question about any of the numbers. Numbers are numbers. But you had made the statement, when you do the budget, you know, obviously, it's a conservative budget, which I appreciate, but normally, at the end of the year, it's more to the positive side. We're not having unexpected expenditures, but we may have savings that are passed on. How do you balance the fact that, you know, the criticism of that type of budgeting has always been that, you know, we've got all this extra money that shows up at the end of the year, that could have been spent other places? How do you walk that line and get the correct balance?
That's a great question. So, I mean, it is, Kent County's been conservative. They've been conservative for decades, long before I got here. I'm a Dutchman, so I'm pretty conservative myself. But, so, I mean, you never know what's going to happen, right? Sometimes mid-year, you have emergencies. So we always budget conservatively. Our tax revenue estimates are typically conservative. But it is a fine line. You don't want to end up with $50 million extra each year, you know, that you could have put to good use somewhere. So it's a fine line. Sometimes expenses come in higher with new programs or state mandates that we don't know about in the year. So we do very conservatively budget. We use, but we do plan six and a half million dollar lapse, which we try to hit that number at least each year, sometimes more, but, you know, you kind of walk the line every year. So some things, you know, in the middle of the year, COVID hits, and something wasn't anticipated. It doesn't impact property taxes as quickly, but the city of Grand Rapids next door had a significant immediate drop in income taxes. So things like that come up, so we try to be conservative, but try to balance it out with the needs of the county as well.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning.
Thank you for the great encapsulation of a lot of complex activity. So on page 15, I just wanted to look at your report that the taxable value has increased 9.1%, which is the highest increase we've seen in many years. And I assume that that's due to, of course, it's capped by inflation, new investments in real estate, uncapping in transactions. Those are primary dynamics that result in that. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the county has a 9.1% increase in our revenue, because at some point, we have to readjust under Headley. Am I right?
That's correct, yes.
And we did, actually dropped our tax rate this past year.
We did, yeah.
What did we drop it by?
I don't have the number specifically with me. It was a fraction of a percent, but I believe cumulatively, in the general fund, we just looked at that. I believe we've had over $15 million in lost revenues cumulate in the general fund for the Headley rollbacks.
So am I right then, from the net effect to the taxpayer, there's actually a slight reduction in the taxes they pay?
Depending on how much their taxable value increased. But yes, the mileage did roll back.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Faber.
There we go. Thanks. Page 42, you kind of, I think that was the Treasurer's Fund. Can you explain that a little bit? Are we, we're trying, so we, a month and a half ago, two months ago, we lent the Treasurer money so that he could pay off all the locals and then get reimbursed. Is the goal, then, I think you mentioned self-funding that?
Yeah, one of the goals was hopefully to...
That wouldn't be a decision we make in the future.
Correct. That would be a decision that would come back to this board. In the past, we've transferred money from DTANs back to the general fund as revenue source, but several years ago, we decided to hold the funds in here. For one, there was a lawsuit pending, and then additionally, we've talked about potentially internally funding those in the future. So that would be a decision that would come back to the board.
So if I'm correct in my numbers, the goal is to get that to $25 million, something in that ballpark.
Somewhere in that ballpark, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Others, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all the details and everything that goes into making this, not only for the community to have access to, but the ratings agencies and all the different parties that find value in the, in the whole report. I know we have, over the next five, six years, somewhere in the $260 million range for capital needs, for buildings and whatnot. And so having, you know, that $43 million that we've been putting into that, all the different buckets of the capital fund, I think it's just evidence of Kent County being fiscally responsible and planning, planning to the future, so that we have some of the money, you know, set aside, even if not all, and we do, we do end up needing to take on some additional debt for those things. But I'm curious on the, the other fund balance outside of capital, more like the operating fund balances that we keep and the policy we have there, just with the, the federal government being in a, in a position where the debt service is like the top expense of the federal government nowadays, and that's, you know, just leading to challenges with federal budgets and funding and, you know, lots of disagreements in Washington on the right path forward there. So I'm just curious, in terms of if we're, we're impacted by any federal funding streams, you know, getting cut off suddenly or in a short term, are we, is our fund balance, in terms of operating fund balance, in a good position to handle that, if that would occur in September or whenever those, those budget decisions are being made in Washington?
So it's a little bit complicated. Our general fund is in great shape, and most of those, most of those projects are not funded out of general funds, so that wouldn't really not be impacted. Most of it would come out of grants through KCCA or the Health Department primarily. Those are the two. Circuit Court has some federal funding through, for front of the court, things like that. So those are the funds we'd have to look at specifically. And it depends on the funding type. So a lot of funding type, if they cut it off, you've got to cut your service because there's no, there's no lags. Some of the programs get prepaid, like from the Health Department, they'll get, they'll get an allotment ahead of time, and then they have a couple of months to spend that down. So those may have some fund balance in play, but it would depend on what the cut was, what the contract said, and when the funding was cut off, of what we would have to do with those grant dollars.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, picking up where Matt left with the threat of federal funding being cut, I thought it'd be important to find out what is the total balance of our contingency fund, or what most people call a rainy day fund for Kent County.
So the general fund, if you look on page 38, we finished '24 with $113.8 million in fund balance. You can see a large jump in '23, and that was due to the nine-month fiscal year shift, and we now reported at our high point of the year, '930. So you can see $21 million there, a jump in '23. '24 was more typical year of 5.5, so very good, healthy fund balance.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Jeff, just following up on that with the fund balance, how, what's our, one of the things people talk about is how long we could operate the government on, if we had no other revenue, and what's that figure approximately if we...
I don't know.
I'll put you way on the spot, but...
In the quarterly report I do, I think we have days cash on hand, and that report is on this one. Don't quote me, but I think it's around 52 days.
Okay.
Roughly somewhere in that range.
Great.
I can get the specific number. It was in the last quarterly financial update.
I can take a look at it too. Thank you. I don't see anybody else. Thanks, Jeff. We appreciate it. All right, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is public comment related to Agenda Items Only. Do we have cards this morning, Madam Clerk? We do. So the clerk will call your name, and then you have up to three minutes, and please state the agenda item that you are commenting on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we have John Hanks. On deck, we have Linda Kirk.
Welcome, Mr. Hanks.
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of Agenda Item 8E. As, I'm John Hanks. I have lived on Breezy Point Drive for over 40 years. I own two separate properties on Breezy Point on the lake. Both of these homes were built before the Kent County Circuit Court established a lake level in 1965. One home was built in 1954 and the other in the 1930s. I have had at least two episodes of flooding and significant damage in the past 40 years, one in 1990 and a second in the 2021 period. There have been two additional amended increases to the 1965 lake level. One increase in 1995 and another in 2022. I need to emphasize that both flooding episodes and damage to my properties occurred at these previous lower levels set by the Circuit Court. The latest increase of 7.8 inches puts both properties at even more risk to flooding because it has raised the level to where there is even less freeboard. The original 90 feet of seawall to my home is actually still there, under, but under, but underwater by three feet. This original seawall is, is out in the lake from the current wall that protects my property now. The two amended increases may benefit several other properties. I must object to putting my property at even greater risk without the drain. The combined frontage of both properties is about 200 feet. After each flooding episode, I've had to pay thousands of dollars to repair property damage, brought in tons of boulders, seawall material, hundreds of yards of soil to fill and raise both properties, new topsoil, new reseeding of a lawn, had to replace irrigation systems, replace the dock, replace hundreds of landscaping plants. Every time the level is amended to a higher level, it creates more risk of flooding. This last increase of 7.8 inches and the drain were sold as a pair. We can't have one without the other. I want to be protected against future flooding. It follows that I support the drain. As far as mitigating the cost, our Dean Lake President, Brian Walters, has outlined several areas for you to consider to lower the cost for each resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanks.
Next up, we have Linda Kirk. On deck, Terry Gates. Hello. I'm Linda Kirk. We live at 2282 Breezy Point Drive on Dean Lake, and my husband, John Hanks, we have different names, so he's already spoke about the flooding issues and the damage we've experienced over our two properties in Breezy Point. That's cost us a lot, a lot of money, thousands of dollars. Not to say that we like the increase of the cost since the final initial project began, and we encourage reviewing those costs as proposed by Brian Walters, the President of Dean Lake Association. However, we very much are in favor of following through on the Dean Lake project, drain project proposed for multiple reasons. Number one is Dean Lake level has, was originally... Number one is Dean Lake level was originally set in nineteen-sixty-five by the Circuit Court, then again in nineteen-ninety-five, both with only the ability to contribute water to the lake and risk properties of flooding episodes without the ability to control the lake level with higher waters. In twenty-twenty-two, the lake level was again increased by seven-point-eight inches, increasing the risk of property damage, but this time it was connected with the requirement of putting in a drain. Number two is in considering the lake level of Dean Lake, one must also consider how the lake is used. Dean Lake is an all-sports lake, which means there is no limit to the boat size, no limit to the size of the motors and/or the size of the waves that they create when they're being used. Being able to control the water level with the drain within the normal level set by the Circuit Court will help at least minimize the damage caused by boating activities. Number three, part seven-oh-seven, or three-oh-seven of Inland Lake Levels and Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Acts of Public Act four-fifty-one of nineteen-ninety-four allows the establishment of a normal level for an inland lake. It defines normal level as providing the most benefit to the public, the best protection for public health, safety, and welfare, the best preserve of natural resources of the state, and best preserve and protect the value of properties around the lake. The key word is protect. In May of nineteen-ninety-nine, a progressive engineering did a study requested by the Kent County Drain Commissioner in response to the request to increase the lake level by the Dean Lake residents. It addressed many areas of concerns. But on page fourteen of that report, under rights of riparians, establishing, quote, "Establishing a normal lake level must balance the rights of riparians to access the use of Dean Lake while at the same time protecting riparian rights from loss and flooding and erosion." There was flooding and erosion in twenty-twenty-one resulting in property damage and multiple trees deaths. So in conclusion, I encourage moving forward on the project of Dean Lake and going through with this by following the act.
Thank you, Ms. Kirk. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Terry Gates, and on deck, Tom Dugan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Terry Gates, and I'm representing Healthy Planet Strategies, which I founded four years ago back in nineteen-eighty, when they first, I was president of the Wyoming J.C.s, and I became aware of global warming, or they called it greenhouse effect back then. And I became very alarmed of what we were doing, humans were doing to our planet. And so this became a passion for me that I've been following through for many, many years. So I'm addressing the Kent County's Community Development Action Plan. And when you look in the action plan, you're addressing energy efficiencies, which is kind of like our entry level for how to deal with global warming. So I'm asking the Commissioners to step it up and to look at doing more than just energy efficiency upgrades and dealing with low-income people and helping them with weatherization, which is basically what the plan is saying. There's a lot of opportunity right now in Kent County. And I know that the Community Development Action Plan is committed to improving neighborhoods, to supporting low-income households, and strengthening public services and infrastructure. But we can do more. And I think that when you look at what's happening at a national scale level where they're cutting back the EPA's governance and they're saying that we need to push climate change efforts to local levels, that means county and city. It's time that the county aligns itself with the Michigan Healthy Climate Plan, which I served on a work group with that. I was part of an Energy Transmission, Production, Distribution, and Storage Work Plan, helping develop the Michigan Healthy Climate Plan. And the City of Grand Rapids has come out with a CAP, Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And so they are, the City of Grand Rapids is addressing environmental issues. And when I served on the commission, or the work group for Michigan Energy Commission, the Consumers Energy came out with a report of the future of energy. And they show energy efficiency being pretty stable from now until the year twenty-forty. But solar is going to be skyrocketing. And this is from Consumers Energy. They're showing that the future of energy is solar. We need more emphasis on renewable energy. And right now, there's a one-hundred-and-fifty-six-million-dollar opportunity called Michigan Solar for All that has been given the opportunity to receive funding. And I'll talk more about this at the end of the meeting because I'm going to talk in general session two. But thank you for your time, and please consider bumping it up a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gates.
Next, we have Tom Dugan, and on deck, Drew Peters.
Welcome, Mr. Dugan.
Thank you. My name's Tom Dugan. I've lived on Dean Lake for about eighteen years. I also serve on the Association Board for the Dean Lake. I apologize for Brian Walters not being here, but he has all delivered to the commission a rather detailed summary of the issues at hand here involving the potential drain and the cost of the drain for Dean Lake. I think this whole situation is a perfect example of the law of unintended consequences. Dean Lake has been there for, long before any of us were around. But it's a nice little lake, eighty-acre lake. And really, the development of Dean Lake happened in the sixty, seventies, and eighties. And that's when a lot of the surrounding areas, the watershed area, had drains connected to the lake. As everybody probably realizes, the historic rains in seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, two thousand and twenty caused significant flooding for any lake in the Kent County and Michigan area because of the historic rains. And that's what happened with Dean Lake. And the absurdity of this whole situation is that had there not been drains connected for the street drains in and around the proximity of Dean Lake, we probably wouldn't have had flooding. But there was significant flooding, significant damage. And there was a very real concern that a solution for that would be a drain. I've been involved in working with the Drain Commission, very good people to work with. We have very candid conversations as to what the best solution was. And the drain was recommended and the route was chosen. And the bottom line is that it took a long time to get the engineering done and come up with a realistic cost to install a drain. Unfortunately, it is much higher than the original estimate, and therein lies the problem. So we've come before this board hoping to seek a resolution. And I always liked the get-to-break address of Abraham Lincoln, that government is there to be by the people, for the people, to solve these kind of situations. So we ask the board to give consideration to the suggestions given by Brian Walters in his summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. And I'll note that the letter from Mr. Walters was forwarded to all of the Commissioners, and there were other public comments, letters that were submitted to them for as well.
Next, we have Drew Peters, and on deck, Dee Jones.
Welcome, Mr. Peters.
Thank you. Drew Peters, and I'm here for the Dean Lake project. I sent everybody too many letters, probably, but you got all that. But the two main things that I'm concerned about is the excessive cost. This is a very small project, especially as far as the county is concerned. Now, they're charging, or they're estimating, two-point-nine million, but that's just an estimate. It could be quite a bit higher. You don't know. Now, the county's repaving miles of plainfield, they're redoing the curbs, they're putting islands in, and that entire project is four-point-six million. How does that compare to us with just two-point-nine? It just doesn't compute. You know, I'm wondering, do we just take any bid? And oh, that's the only bids we have, so the taxpayers are going to pay it. We don't care. So we'll see how you vote on that. The environmental impact, the Drain Commissioner had an attorney there, and she consistently said, I think probably three or four times, that she was surprised we even got a permit to have an exit drain because the state of Michigan and Eagle isn't issuing those any longer. Well, when Eagle issued that, we didn't know we had a hybrid form of milfoil. So I talked to PLM, which is our lake management company, and she gave me a bunch of information. We only have two lakes in Kent County with this hybrid milfoil and only a few others in the state of Michigan. Now, if we put this exit drain in, this milfoil will go into the Grand River and the bayous. Now, we have to treat this with a special type of chemical that, to date, we're not even allowed to do our irrigation, and it's been thirty days. So how are you going to treat that if it gets into a river? You know, right now, it's an enclosed area, and we can put it in. It sits there for thirty or more days to help alleviate the problem. It doesn't kill it totally, but it gets rid of most of it. If you put it in a river or it gets into Lake Michigan, you can't treat this. So I'm really concerned about that. So those are the two main things. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Next, we have Dee Jones, and on deck, Michael Present.
Welcome, Dee.
What up, though? How y'all doing? I just want to show y'all. So excited to do the, well, first of all, let me show y'all the agenda item because I'm speaking. I'm speaking on the community development. Obviously, you guys know I'm passionate about the community, and I'm trying to hold the Republicans and the Dems accountable of investing in the community because the Republicans set the agenda, and you guys control the infrastructure. And sometimes, a lot of times, historically, you guys have overlooked the underserved community unless it's politicians of color that let you guys know that these communities need some funding. You guys usually aren't pushing funding to these communities, to be honest. So I'm going to hold you guys accountable to continuously invest into the community because I'm happy to partner with you guys on the Global Gathering at Garfield Park. That's over there in the neighborhood. I actually kick it with guys in the hood over there and the actual street gangs over there. They're not bad people. They just grew up in poverty. And the lack of investment in the policies that the DeVos and the Van Nandels and people historically have been pushing to keep these people in poverty, and usually that occurs to violence and people dying and things like that. And usually I know about these things because my ears is to the streets. But I got some cool stuff that I want to show you guys. So for community development, I was at this event, the DeVos place, and the company Gildan, who now acquired Haynes and Champion. They gave me all of these blanks, so these are like official blanks right here from Gildan. And eventually, I'm going to be putting these nice brandings and things like that, our brands and stuff like that, that we're going to be selling to the community. So these are nice, but they even gave me a blue hoodie. I'm sorry, they didn't give me red. They gave me a nice blue. This is Champion, though. This is fresh, brand-new. I got this officially from Gildan. Then they got the watch tees because, you know, it's going to be very stylish. This is real streetwear from somebody really from the streets that's going to help Kent County really put the Kent County on because I was just on TV Friday at Wood TV, a channel eight. I was just there live with one of the students that I did the Spring Initiative with, and he actually got a scholarship to Davenport. So I earned a ten-thousand-dollar grant from the city. And we also started the Youth Justice Influence League back up this Tuesday to the partnership that I have with you guys, getting kids offered probation and offers available. But I wanted to show you guys that I actually have like real official blanks from the company directly that I got from the DeVos place. I connected with these people from DeVos. And I'm going to change the streets and the community with the stuff that I got from the DeVos place. It's funny how karma works. It's funny how the universe works, billions and trillions. I'm going to invest in the community, and I look forward to working with you guys at the Global Gathering as I bring my game systems to the hood. Going to have probably the newest 2K or something like that. But my friends in the trenches and everybody's going to be there. You guys are not going to continue to ignore them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
Next.
Just, Madam Clerk, I'm going to count that Dee as your second public comment as well. It was a little bit off of the Community Development Action item, so I appreciate that.
That's cool, Ben. I'll be back next time.
I know you will.
And I'm going to be richer than y'all for that.
Next, we have Michael Present, and on deck, John Kantorowski. Sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mike Present. I live at thirty-seven-fifty Mandarly Drive on Dean Lake, so here to discuss the drain project. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you, and I want to associate myself with our Dean Lake Association's comments from Tom as well as the other comments in the written submissions. I'm here for one reason. Raising the price from three or four years ago from one-point-one million dollars to two-point-nine million dollars now, it's unconscionable, particularly because the proposal is to pass one-hundred percent of that cost onto the Dean Lake residents. I think the Drain Commission knows this. For instance, last week at the Finance Committee meeting, they put up a slide that showed that the annual cost, if people elect to pay this over twenty years out of their property taxes, would be about eleven or twelve-hundred dollars a year. And they had a small footnote that said they couldn't include interest because obviously a bond hasn't been secured yet, so we don't know the interest rate. Interesting, because at the Drain Commission meeting a couple of weeks earlier, they told the homeowners that, well, you probably should expect five or five-and-a-half percent. And if you do the math, it's pretty simple. That means the interest rate in the early years, this doesn't work like a mortgage, interest rate will at least double the total amount. So I think you should know before you make a decision that you're asking the Dean Lake residents, under this proposal, to assume a cost of twenty-four-hundred dollars or more in the early years of paying this. Second, they made a point of emphasis that over two-thirds of Dean Lake residents support this. They gave, they mentioned the number eighty-eight people. I'm one of those people. That's when the cost was one-point-one million dollars, or perhaps it wasn't given a number yet. But what happened is the number skyrocketed afterward. Now, how many of you would get a quote from an engineer for, say, a hundred thousand dollars to improve your home, and then when they come back with the final, it's three-hundred thousand dollars? Would you just accept that, or would you get a second opinion from another engineer? At the Finance Commission meeting, I mentioned three decisions that the Drain Commission made without the Dean Lake Association's input, even though the residents are responsible for a hundred percent of the costs. One, they took three or four years to bring this project forward, and they, in their own words, says that inflation was the primary reason for this problem. Secondly, they decided not to use directional boring. And third, they proposed to secure a bond for the larger amount, but not the smaller amount. So if you decide to go forward, I would suggest that a significant amount, say half of this proposal, should go, should be paid by the county and not just passed on to the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Present.
Next up, we have John Kantorowski, and on deck, Cindy Bright.
Welcome, John.
Well, thank you. I live at two-six-seven-zero Holtman Court on Dean Lake. And I got just a little photo here I wanted to pass. I'm not in favor of flooding, but I don't really like, I've been against this project right from the beginning. The thing is, when you see this picture, the problem with the flooding is all these drains that are added to the lake. This has nothing to do with, you know, the lake itself. These drains are being added, and they're wrecking our lake. We, for the last ten, fifteen years, we've been putting copper sulfate to kill the algae. This algae goes to the bottom, and it kills- This algae goes to the bottom, and it kills all the good weeds. It's ruining the lake. And what I'm concerned about with this project is that they're going to add more drains to it. You're all of a sudden so excited about this, I just have the feeling that maybe some of that stuff on Plainfield or wherever is going to just be added more and more to this lake, and it's going to absolutely ruin it. Now, I'm saying this just to let you know, I have 20 years' experience as a construction manager. I, um, Professor Amerita from Fair State, where I taught construction management, 12 and a half years. And I'm also certified in lead construction. So I'm not just, you know, I know that there's a lot of things that we can do to save this lake, and adding more drains, and, you know, you see the mud there. When you start pumping water out of it, that mud's not coming out, that mud's there to stay, along with road salt, people draining their oil into the streets, people's fertilizers, all that stuff is going into the lake, it's a catch basin. And it's really, really not fair for us to have to pay, to have water pumped out of it, good water, basically good water, and leave all that sludge in the lake, and we're supposed to pay for that. I mean, how would you feel if you had to pay another $150 a month on your taxes for something you didn't cause to save your, and it's not saving your lake, it's just stalling the problem? There's a, environmentally, there's a lot of things that could be done. There's, uh, rain gardens, there's, uh, cess ponds, um, there's all kinds of things, diverting the water other places. There's a lot of things that could be done, and we're not doing any of that. I know, um, other, other counties have done things, like Waco County, they went through and they cleaned up their lakes, they took all the sewers out of them, they made force, you know, took all the septic tanks out of them, and here we are polluting our lake. And I hear they were kind of doing the same thing to Dean, or to, uh, Reed's Lake. There's some ponds that are quite polluted that are heading towards the lake. So anyway, that's all I got to say. I would like to, oh, and as far as the money goes, if they want money to remove late drains from that lake, count me in. I'll pay twice that amount, no kidding. But, but to just create, continue the problem, I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Cindy Bright, and on deck, Emily Riley.
Welcome, Ms. Bright.
I'll be a little shorter than most. My name is Cindy Bright, 3562 Manderly. I did submit a couple letters also to the board. I just want to touch on a couple general key topics that I definitely, or my husband and I, support our association president's reduction of costs. Right now, the special assessment that we're being given is such, in such magnitude, that it's really unacceptable. It's nothing that we expected. The estimate originally was about $2 million less. The other thing that really bothered me that surfaced as more research was done was the fact that on the Assessment District, that all the parcels really weren't included. And this is a definite interest to particularly my husband and I, because we have a five-foot parcel, and it does front the lake. We were asked to, okay, you have frontage, you have to participate, there's no preferential treatment. So then, what happened is the township's parcels, we feel, got preferential treatment. And then also, the parcel that was left out has a tax number, fronts on the lake, is not even included in the Special Assessment District. And I did approach the Drain Commission, they told me that the GIS system, the Kent County GIS system that they used, this parcel doesn't show up, so it's just not included, which to me, just because it didn't show up, it's an error, and it should be included. Anyway, um, to us, this project has an open-ended checkbook. Our money's being spent, and we have no control over how it's being spent. So the Kent County Board of Commissioners is our voice, and we're hoping that you take every letter and everything that people have told you into consideration, and don't move forward with this project as it stands today.
Thank you, Cindy.
Next, we have Emily Riley, and, Mr. Chair, that is the last card we have.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome, Emily.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Emily Riley. I have lived at my home on Dean Lake with my husband for nearly 32 years, will be 32 years in July. And I share the sentiment and wish to call concern about the unintended consequences of this proposed drain. While in theory, I'm in favor, I'm certainly in favor of protection from flooding, which was the original motivation for it, but concern about the unintended consequences include, as we heard, this open checkbook, I've not really heard clear or convincing plan for maintenance of this drain, unintended costs of maintaining it, or what criteria will we use to regulate its use? We understand a level, but one of the arguments made was to have a healthier lake, which I'm certainly in support of, along with Mr. Kantorowski, a healthier lake with fresh water coming in and an exit route for water going out, but we really don't know what that criteria will be, particularly if the lake is at the desired level. Will there still be that inflow and outgoing of water to help protect from just stagnant water? Okay? So my concern is the unintended consequences, also the environmental unintended consequences, and that the costs of those consequences would also need to be planned for. Sometimes things go wrong. Would that be shared cost, or would that also go on to the residents again that live on the lake? So thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I've been informed, that is the end of the submitted cards. There's still opportunity for others to give public comment. Please come forward, we'll just do it as a folks step up, and please give your name, and you have up to three minutes. Good morning.
Hi, Steve Harple, 2384 Four Mile Road. First, I'd like to apologize to everyone that's received a barrage of emails, phone calls, you know, personal visits in some cases. But I am here, and I'm trying to clear up the frustration between me and my neighbors that we're not quite understanding about how we got here. And what I did is I printed off what I, what I think is the source of frustration, which is the sample petition that was sent out. I can give you guys all one of these. Dean Lake has some pretty fiscally responsible people on it that, when this project started, knew what was going to happen. So we specifically, with the help of the Kent County Drain Commission, included in the petition that a second petition would be required for the Drain Commissioner to move forward at any time. That is listed in both the petition you see there, the one on the right-hand side is the one the state recommends. The one on the left-hand side, the one we signed, has been altered. That was altered by, I believe, from several FOI requests, the Kent County Drain Commission Attorney themselves, knowing full well that we would need a second petition in order to move forward. There's a cover letter that goes to that, that actually says right in it in bold on page two, and it's in one of the several exhibits I sent to you, that a second vote will be needed. When I approached the Drain Commission with this information, I was told once that they don't need to read the cover letter. That's not important. That's where the frustration starts. So following this process, the, without a two-thirds, without this second vote, which would be necessary, the Drain Commissioner went in front of the board on 9/21. In three minutes, he was able to give a speech that was so compelling that the Board of Commissioners moved it forward. In that three-minute speech, and I sent you all the video of it that I pulled together, several false statements were made. One is that two-thirds of Dean Lake agreed. The only thing we can agree on is we didn't agree on anything. You can review the 32 exhibits, you'll see that there's all sorts of opinions, and some of them range for let's do the drains, some say don't, some just say don't do anything, right? That meeting, he also made a statement that there was zero objections. It would be very difficult to make an objection to something we don't even know exists. Throughout the entire process, no one knows when these dates are, when the meetings are, there are some emails going to some of the associations, some going to others, some that just don't exist. So what I tried to do is gather a timeline for you. I sent you an email with 32 exhibits, it's wildly long, but what it has is every email I could actually gather from all the sources. Some of them being Dean Lake Association, some of them being the Drain Commissioner, some of them came from the Board of Commissioners. So I really request that you review it and look at what happened. On 9/23, we voted, again, stating no objections, and the main cause of this is that two-thirds of Dean Lake agrees. Without two-thirds of Dean Lake, there's no fiduciary reason to push this forward. As everyone has pointed out, it's for the people of Dean Lake, it only benefits the 122. So beyond that 122, why would anybody else make a decision? So finally, sorry. This is a petition that I did last night that includes the signatures of 71 of the 122 people that are not in favor of moving this project forward.
Thank you.
So let me give you that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Harple. Anyone else who would like to give public comment related to the agenda items? Good morning.
Morning. Jonathan Arnold, 3909 Kiwanau Drive. I was formerly the Dean Lake President during the three-year time span that we had, the High Water Event. You know, at the time, we had property damage, and we were just looking for a solution. We had approached the Drain Commission and worked kind of hand-in-hand with them to help find a pathway to first getting a study, figuring out there's a possibility of doing this, and then ultimately coming up with a game plan to do so. I feel like, at the time, based on projections and whatnot, we were encouraged to go the route of applying for a drain through the Dean Lake District, which is property owners. There was an alternative route that we were discouraged to go down, because we were told that going that route, although it would include a drastically larger pool of people that would benefit from the drain, we would be the ones mainly burdened with the expense because we had the frontage on the lake. But retrospectively, now that we're dealing with a 2.9 million dollar bid as opposed to a 1.1 million dollar bid, and Dean Lake is a retention pond for a large watershed district, and Dean Lake is a public lake that is enjoyed by the public every single day of the year, both warm weather, cold weather, you name it, it is a resource for the public, it is a retention pond for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of households, yet the owners are being strapped with the burden of doing this project. So, you know, the project in its basic form makes sense. The cost structure and who's burdening the cost, who's responsible for the cost, doesn't make sense. And so we just ask that, you know, we are able to get some relief and potentially rethink how the drain was originally requested, and maybe if there, if it makes sense to go the other route and request it through a larger district in which the cost can be spread amongst more people that benefit from this project, that that's what we do. The Drain Commission kicked this project down the can and town, down the road, and said that they had more important things to do. That resulted in higher cost. And now, here we are at this crossroad. Since it was not this huge priority, why don't we take the time to potentially loop in more people who benefit from them and disperse the cost amongst them? That's what I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Anyone else for public comment on this issue? Yes, welcome.
Welcome, Kurt Miranda, 2214 Breezy Point. I've been on the lake 46 years. I've had kids, grandkids now that are swimming in that lake, fishing in that lake, wonderful lake. Really, the only problem we've had with that lake is when we had, you know, just flooding one time, we had torrential rains for, I think we got five to seven inches in just a few months, and the level stayed up for a couple, a couple of years. It since has subsided, and that's the only time I can really remember we had a problem with that. To spend $3 million and taxed me, even though the Kent, it sounded like the Kent County is a pretty solvent right now at the time, from what I heard before, and to tax me $1,200 a year and a limited income, it concerns me. And, I mean, we all benefit from the watershed. Just because we live on a lake doesn't mean we have a lot of money. I bought my house originally for $50,000, and, you know, it, there's a lot of concerns. If we just let it go without the drain, I think it'll be fine. I know that's probably, some people are going to disagree with me, but I like, let God handle it. It's his, it's his nature, and I would just assume, see it not go forward, and if it does, just share the cost. I mean, there's, what, 500,000 people in this county? It'd be a couple bucks a person. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to give public comment to the board? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you very much. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the Consent Agenda. I will call on Commissioner Halsted.
Chair Green, I move to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Coleman. Although, any questions, comments, discussion on the Consent Agenda? I don't see any. With that, this is a voice vote. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a roll call vote, I was skipping ahead. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Commissioner Boojak.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Stuck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes, the Consent Agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Eight, Resolutions. And for Item 8A, Commissioner LeGrand is absent, so I will call on Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 39 at today's date, appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees.
Thank you, is there support? Supported by Vice Chair Burl. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I'd like to thank the, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Green. Commissioner LeGrand and I interviewed a number of people. We have three appoint, uh, excuse me, five appointments at three different boards in the, in the county. Community Corrections Advisory Board, the Kent County Community Action Advisor Governing Board, and the County Family and Children's Coordinating Council. County staff initially reviewed all the applicants and to figure out who was eligible, and then Commissioner LeGrand and I interviewed a number of people. We have very qualified people that are enthused about serving, so we hope the board will move these folks forward so they can start their service on these various boards. So, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to commend yours and Commissioner LeGrand's and the committee's work on that. Any others? Okay, seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and it is adopted. We will move on to Agenda Item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 40 of today's date, the Michigan State Police State Crisis Intervention Program, SCIP, grant.
Thank you, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Womack. Questions, comments, or discussions on this item? Commissioner Womack?
We really like to support this, and I'd say it's very good to see the county supporting money that is going towards an effort like this, and that we'll be partnering with organizations that really can go out and get that work done. So I just think it's great that we support this, some of that work will be done in our district, so just super supporting this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see any. With that, this is, again, a roll call vote. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Roll call.
Thank you. Thank you. Trying to juggle too many things mentally here. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 40, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 40 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Item 8C, and I will call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 41 of today's date for the Kent County Community Development Action Plan and Appropriation.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just curious, maybe Admin or maybe KCCA staffer here, I know the CDBG and the Home Investment Programs are both projects that at the federal level have been identified for cuts in the next year's budget. Wondering what our sort of contingencies are, what steps might we take if that does not come through?
I'd like Gustavo to start, and then I'll have a couple, and Chad and I'll have a couple of comments as well.
Gustavo Perez is our Community Action Director. Welcome, Gustavo.
More number one. So, on that note, there's a few dollars that impact community action, as you heard from Jeff earlier. And so, Community Development Block Grant is one of them. Our Home Grant is also one of them, which is included in the action plan. Right now, we do have some funds, and Chad has been working, our Community Development Manager overseeing these dollars. We do have some funds that will stretch into the next year. And Community Development Block Grant funding, we're good, I think, for this coming year. After that, it's, depends on what passes through the budget. So right now, we have some dollars to operate for the coming year, and with our Home Grant Funds, we do have some for at least the next couple of years, I think. Chad, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So we always list the things that we're gonna do. Is there anything that's not on the list that we're missing that we really need to address?
Well, right now, we are in strategic planning for over the next five years. And depending on what happens with the budget, we're gonna give, have an opportunity for the community to give input on where those dollars will be going, or where we'll be gearing those dollars going forward. A lot of the projects that we get with either our CDBG or Home, we do an application process. And there is several members of our Advisory and Governing Board are on that committee to look at and review applications. And so, we get a lot of feedback from the community on what, what they want to see going forward. We have public comment periods on those projects, and so when everything gets finalized and we move those forward, we've taken a lot of steps to get the input on where we should be spending the money. But it also aligns with our strategic plan where we also have forums and community input in order to develop the plan.
Just to add, add to that a little bit more. We always talk about community input. We've heard several speakers that, you know, community input doesn't always really occur. What do we do to ensure that the ones that can't make the public comment sessions or get the mailings to really get the true feelings? And those are normally from people that somehow aren't in that public comment information.
Well, I'll be honest, we do struggle with getting people to show up sometimes for the public comment period. We do put that, we put it out through an ad campaign. We put it on our social media. We send out information, it's on our newsletter, about when these are occurring. And we will get some public comment on those things, but we do open it up. And I, I think it's a struggle across, not just where we see it, but to get people to come actually and engage. It's nice to see this many people here today, and would love to get that more as we continue to do public comment for our projects.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I don't see any. Thank you, Gustavo. With that, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 41, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 41 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Resolution D, and I will call again on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 42 of today's date to approve the Kent County Community Action, June 30th Annual Operations Funding.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Morales. Questions, comments, or discussion? Got our work out of Gustavo this morning already, I think. All right. With that, we will, this is another roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 42, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 41 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to Resolution D, and I will call again on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 42 of today's date to approve the Kent County Community Action, June 30th Annual Operations Funding.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Morales. Questions, comments, or discussion? Got our work out of Gustavo this morning already, I think. All right. With that, we will, this is another roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 42, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 42 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move on to Item 8E, and I will once again call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 43 of today's date, Dean Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District Bond.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Womack. I know there's gonna be questions, comments, and discussion on this. I'd also like to invite, I'm gonna ask the County Drain Commissioner and his team to walk through the presentation on this for some of the edification of the board. Appreciate your offering to do that this morning. I know we have several of the engineers and our other folks here, so like to walk through that, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions from the Board of Commissioners to anybody who's available.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to introduce Kyle Omiri from Fehe Schultz, the District, Drain District Attorney in Lake, handles our lake levels as well. And he's gonna kind of give you the legal background to lake levels. This is not a county drain. This, under the Drain Code, this is under the Lake Level Act, Part 307. So he'll go into that. When he's finished, then we'll have Kevin Gritters from Prine de Newhoff. They did the engineering on this project and the studies that were required from the beginning, then he'll give a synopsis of what they did and what they came up with. And then we'll take questions from there.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of the County Board of Commissioners. So, Part 307 is Michigan's lake level law. It has been around for close to 100 years or so. Originally, it was the Inland Lake Level Act, 1962. It's been re-codified a number of times. Now it's in what's called Michigan's Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, Part 307 of that statute. Essentially, what it does is it allows circuit courts and counties to establish lake levels to be maintained by the county, and then ultimately, kind of day-to-day operations by the county's delegated authority. In Kent County, very similar to many counties throughout Michigan, the delegated authority is the Kent County Drain Commissioner. So view the Kent County Drain Commissioner as almost the fiduciary of the lake to intend to meet the lake level that is ordered by the Kent County Circuit Court. So here, the Circuit Court originally established the level of Dean Lake in 1965, amended it in 1999. Those numbers were, let's see here, 706.3, then 706.6, kind of feet above mean sea level. Then it went to, in 2022, based on the petition that was received from the property owners, it initiated essentially court action. So, when we think of Part 307 and how petitions work, there is two ways a lake level action can happen to update it in the court. One is by motion or resolution of the County Board of Commissioners. The second way is petition. Most, many drain commissioners will do both, and that's what happened here. So, there's not a two-step process, it's a one-step process, and the only thing the petition does is it authorizes the court to essentially re-look at the order that was existing. Here, in 2022, what essentially happened is the level of the lake was increased about seven inches. I heard some comment earlier in public comment to give maybe a little bit of flavor for how this relates to that. In the wet periods, 2019 to 2021, the level of the lake, and this is, I think, in the lake level report that's in your packet, was 2.6 feet above the legal level. So the level was increased by seven inches, but obviously not as high as the flooding level. And then also, what the Kent County Circuit Court did, what is, what it is required to by statute, is establish the special assessment district boundaries, essentially the properties that can be assessed. The way that Part 307 has been created by the legislature is the court determines who can be assessed, and it is set like that until the court changes it. So when the county is doing assessments for a lake level, it has to follow who the court has determined to be assessed. Generally, who is in a lake level special assessment district is folks that have some form of private legal access to a lake, because what Part 307 is doing is it is maintaining a lake level, so the benefit is related to the maintenance of the, of the lake level. Not necessarily drainage that is occurring elsewhere, but the benefit of having a consistent lake level. And then, as you see, the second step of the process is really the Drain Commissioner, as delegated authority, instituting projects to try to maintain that lake level as, as best as you can. Obviously, you can't control Mother Nature 100%, but the intent of this is to try to create a lake level that would best benefit the, the district, the lake, the property owners. And the court determines that, which the court did in 2022. So, when you see this, and this presentation comes from the presentation that I shared with the Finance Committee and the property owners, there is a second portion to this. So first is the court sets the level, the court determines who can be assessed, then the Drain Commissioner has the fun job of determining, okay, how are we going to apportion the assessments? So there's a public hearing that's set, everybody's mailed notice to it, where they go over the computation of costs as well as the assessment role. Here, like many other lake levels in Michigan, basically, there's two sets of categories, as well as there's some township parcels, which I'll address, where lakefront owners are assessed at a 1, and then backlots are assessed essentially at a half rate. These township parcels relate to, there is a township parcel that hosts what would host a pump station for the project, so the public benefit's a little bit different. It is actually benefiting the lake in some senses, so I think that is the reasoning why that one is at a 0. And then there is a township parcel that also includes some form of lake access, which can be used by the district as well. So the viewpoint of making that a .5 instead of a 1 is because there is also some benefit returning to, to the district. Not necessarily the same as a lakefront parcel where you can exclude people, you know, I live on the lake, only I can use this 100 feet of frontage. I have also seen some, some items in the, in the correspondence, you know, why don't you use frontage, et cetera? Why you don't get, why many districts don't use frontage is, as an assessment criteria is, you'll have one person with 100 feet of frontage, another person with 150 feet of frontage, and the person with 150 feet of frontage will say, well, the person with 100 feet of frontage, they launch more boats than I do, and so forth, so they're benefiting just as much as I do. You kind of get into, into those. There's many ways you can do assessment methodology criteria. This is probably the most common that I see throughout the state, is doing this one and a half. It is essentially kept separate, in a separate fund that has to be used for the maintenance of essentially the lake level control infrastructure for Dean Lake. So, for this lake, when you think of, if there is excess funds left, that's why you want to be relatively conservative. The last thing you want to do is reassess people after you. You don't want to make your numbers extremely lean to the point where you reassess people because, one, you may do so in a non-transparent manner where you just put on their tax rolls so you don't have another hearing, and then, two, you don't want to tell people, I think everybody's disappointed by the final number, to be quite candid, but you don't want to tell people a number, which this is our final number on this computation of costs. It does not go up from this number. These are based on hard bids. It's not like the lake level study in 2022 that was more performed for basically court to determine whether the lake level should be adjusted by the Circuit Court. So, computation of costs, contingency, the contingency is maintained for the benefit of Dean Lake. Dean Lake will have infrastructure that needs to be maintained, the drain, the augmentation wells, it can be all spent on the maintenance of that, and hopefully, there wouldn't have to be an assessment on Dean Lake for many, many years for maintenance if that contingency is left over. This is what I was talking about for assessment methodology, one credit, half a credit, that's the district. The one thing that Dean Lake suffers from, and my experience with doing lake levels throughout Michigan, is unfortunately, the district is small. So, whenever you have a project, and these are long-term projects, you know, this is hopefully, the project that solves the issue of the flooding that has occurred multiple times over the decades, they're relatively permanent solutions. So, when you think of lake level control, you think of dams, you think of, this is building a new outlet, a drain, long-term solutions, long-term infrastructure. And however, when you have a smaller district, like you generally do have here, the burden can be a little bit. We've tried to, I think, mitigate that as much as possible, and this is another thing I think that has been brought up, by utilizing the bonding process. The bonding process allows to spread these assessments for especially those folks that, you know, can't pay off their assessment to avoid the interest, to spread it for, you know, a number of years, in this proposal, 20 years, to try to make at least the annual payments more manageable for the lakefront and the other benefiting property owners. These are the estimated assessments. I know you have all this in the packet, they have been discussed, both annual numbers and then total numbers over a period of 20 years that you've all had the correspondence, and this is the last part I want to say is, if the County Board of Commissioners goes ahead, accepts the recommendations of the Kent County Drain Commissioner with respect to the assessment role, issuing the bonds, as well as the computation of costs, property owners, if they believe it is inequitably, you know, apportioned, there is an appeal process, and the appeal process has been shared, public notices for the assessment hearing has been shared at the Finance Committee, and, you know, we have this kind of one-page printout, this is exactly what it says in the statute, it talks about the time period that you need to appeal. And with that, I'm happy to defer to Mr. Gritters or take any questions from the board as you may see fit.
Kevin is going to give a, is Kevin giving a supplemental, or no? I can't remember. You don't have to, Kevin, I'm sure we'll have some questions for you. Okay, any questions on the presentation or the project in general? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. So, the court has assumed jurisdiction as far back as 65. Of course, not every lake is under the court's jurisdiction. Somebody petitioned way back in 65, and since then, the court has always had jurisdiction?
Correct, yeah. It's, I believe it's Section 30707 Sub 5. They have continuing jurisdiction for the, until, you know, there's no lake level, which that is basically, almost essentially never happened. Very common throughout Michigan, there's about 340 lakes with established lake levels. Some of them have lake levels that have been established even earlier than 1965.
And as I understand it, the drain commissioner's responsibility duty, fiduciary duty, basically is triggered by the fact that the court has jurisdiction and has ordered that there be process in place to maintain the level that they've set.
Exactly, and that is his responsibility to maintain that level that has been set, and what you can see is in the past, that that level has been exceeded necessitating this type of project infrastructure.
So, is that then a duty of the drain commissioner, regardless of what the owners like or don't like? Is it still the duty of the drain commissioner to comply as best with the court order?
It is, it is, and particularly when you establish new lake levels, this is not a new one, but when you establish new lake levels, some of the factors you look at are impacts on lower-level properties closer to the lake and so forth, and it is unfortunately not a popularity contest. It is to best maintain the level of a lake to ensure recreational values, to avoid property damage, environmental concerns. Those are all things that have been considered by the court when determining what level, and then things that the drain commissioner has to consider as well.
Is there a, if I might have, is there a process under Part 307 or elsewhere that would authorize or allow for a petition to the court to abandon jurisdiction? They've had it for all these years, can either the drain commissioner or owners go back to the court and say, that was fun, we decided not to have you involved anymore, please step aside?
So, I will, I have seen a Court of Appeals case where that has happened. However, I would caution that analogy for this lake in particular, where when you've had established lake level for a substantial amount of time, development has been built in accordance with that lake level to an extent, and then environmentally, that essentially ecosystem has been established around that lake level. So, Eagle also is an interested party that needs to be noticed for these types of hearings. So, there may not be, you know, there may be a mechanism to abandon a lake level through court action, however, a court may not order that in a circumstance like this, where you've had a lake level established for quite some time.
I'm not suggesting it's reasonable at all in this case, but just procedurally, who then has the standing to raise that potential back to the court? Is it the drain commissioner and any owner?
Essentially, so the courts say any interested party, which basically is probably anybody in the district.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's probably enough for now.
Okay. Others, questions, comments, discussion? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. This particular district's not considered a floodplain district, so they're not required to have federal flood insurance?
It's not, I don't know exactly, I don't know the answer to that. This district, the special assessment district, is not a floodplain district. It is basically a lake level district that is under the statute for the purposes of maintaining a lake level. Lake levels can have an ancillary benefit of flood control, but the primary purpose of this statute is to set a level so people can basically use the lake, but it's not necessarily flood control.
Okay.
Yeah.
Others? Mr. Pakla.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I've got a few questions here that I'll start with. We've determined that, you know, the drain commissioner is responsible for maintaining the lake level once it's gotten into the, once the Circuit Court has taken jurisdiction there. But prior to 2020, there was no talk of a drain being installed, is that correct? Or prior to the petition?
I don't know what has occurred in the past, you know, since 1965. I'm not aware of it. I began working on this project in about 2021 or so, so I don't know.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to get at is really the timeline that brought us to here today as opposed to where we had been for the last 60-ish years, right, where there had been a lake level established, but there hadn't been action to install a costly drain to maintain the, to reduce the height of that lake level, right? That's what I'm trying, maybe this is a question for the drain commissioner.
It's not necessarily to reduce the height of the lake level, it's to actually maintain what has been ordered in the lake level order. So, I do lake levels throughout the state of Michigan. It is not uncommon that counties are not maintaining their lake levels as they're ordered by the court. That is not the right thing to do, that can impose liability on a county, but I suspect that is probably what was happening, quite frankly, in particularly high rain events.
Okay. And so, then again, maybe this is a question for Mr. Yonker, the drain commissioner, just to understand really what that timeline has been since the petition came in and this got on the radar in order to do the right thing, so to speak, of actually maintaining that lake level. So, Ken, can you walk me through sort of, you know, residents come in with this two-thirds petition, the board passes a resolution in 2021, what happens then after there? Because we saw, you know, and we've heard a lot of comment here about the delays, really trying to understand sort of what happened, why are we now at this point where the, understanding, of course, timelines balloon construction costs?
Correct. Well, at that point then, we start the process of the necessary studies to get permitting through Eagle. Along with that timeframe, then, the engineer is looking at how we're going, what system we're going to use. They start evaluating how much water we got to move, what size pipe we need, what size pump we need, where's the location going to be, all that stuff then is start to look at, and then, of course, they get into the roads, and I got to work with the road commission for permit, what's the best route to do, what roads are, how the roads will be affected during the construction period. So, then, we start working through all those. But the permitting, like we talked about, the environmental piece is studied, we had to do an in-depth study on any invasive plants, any invasive fish, or any bacterial contaminants that is in that lake, and that then determines whether they permit it. So, the lake met the qualifications, but that takes time. You got to collect those water samples and evaluate them, and so then, that whole process starts to take place. And to your question on, has this been requested before? Oh, yeah. But I sat on them, because when the water goes down, everybody quiets down. This time, the water kept high for three years, and that's what brought us to this point. I couldn't say no anymore, or I couldn't ignore it, I should say. But it's a typical scenario that I deal with on all our lake levels. It's not uncommon, but this time, it just lasted much longer, and we had to move.
So, two follow-up questions to that. One, we have this initial computation of costs that we saw in our packet from the previous iteration of this, right? This number's been referenced, $1.2 million. Did we ever get to the point where we were ready to act on that computation of cost, and we just delayed the project?
No, that was so, at that time, the engineer had to give some kind of dollar value to the project for the court. So, at that time, they took the scenario that they seen that we thought would be the best way to approach this project, and they put a number to it. Well, then after, and then that goes, the court accepts that, and we move through the process. Once we get past it, they start looking at, what can we do? Can we do the way we want, do it the way we wanted to or not? And we found we couldn't, because there is so much infrastructure in the road. So, like, example, we were looking at directionally boring along the side of the road, which had been clean and easy, and very little repair to be done. But what we found is all kinds of infrastructure that we had to web through, and that couldn't be done through directional bore. So, now, we had to move into the road and tear it up. And then, we still have, you have plans, you know, where stuff is, but they're not 100%. So, then, we have to take into contingency, what are we going to do when we hit a sanitary that's in the way of the direction of our pipe? Well, things got to be moved, things got to be changed.
And so, when we see in our packet a computation of costs from previous years, is that the same kind of document that we have as the computation of costs right now? Because they look similar, right? They've got sort of similar line items in there.
Correct.
But it sounds to me like you're saying that that computation of costs from previous was not the kind of computation that's going to be held to the number that's on there, which we just heard was the case here, right? Let's $2.9 million, we just heard was, that's what it's going to be, there's no change to that.
Correct. Well, it's, computation costs is what you have at the time. Whatever costs we had or come up with at the time is what went into the first one. And then, you start doing studies, and the costs then reflect what you discovered through the studies.
And I may be able to help with that question. So, for the court hearing, and this kind of goes into the weeds of Part 307, for the court to order revision to a lake level, particularly like this one where there's a seven-inch difference, you have to do what's called a lake level study, and there's about 15 different factors that you evaluate, the locations of shoreline improvements, environmental impacts, the feasibility of a project, whether you can, you know, it's actually feasible, alternatives to a project. And then, one of those 15 factors is an estimate of costs. It is not the same as a computation of costs, which is based on hard bids, it is based on essentially an engineer's estimate, and then also not getting, you know, it's pre-permitting, pre-a lot of basically construction plans, but it's a display of costs, I think, for the court to determine whether that level is essentially going to be feasible. So, it's not necessarily the same concept. Of course, we'd like it to be the same number, but it is, it's basically a very preliminary number that just show maintaining this level on Dean Lake is feasible by this method, and here's our number. The other thing I would add is, in the 2022 timeframe, when this lake level study was put together and when the court hearing was, you know, my experience with public infrastructure projects is you would get engineers' estimates, and you would still get bids that were higher than the engineer's estimate. So, that's a little bit towards, that one point, that $1.1 million wasn't necessarily, you know, it wasn't a bid outnumber like this one is, which has been publicly bid, there was two bidders and so forth. I hope that helps.
I think it does, and I just pulled up the document, and I see that it's titled an "estimate of probable costs" and not a "computation of costs," so I appreciate that.
Correct, yeah, correct.
The other question that was brought up from the association's addendum, which was just sent to us yesterday, was this notion of the roadway and the cost sharing, or lack thereof, of the road reconstruction. Can you clarify for us what the road commission would do if this project didn't go forward, and why this project would assume the total costs of the road reconstruction, even if the road commission was already going to do that?
Well, the road commission, we had conversation with them around that, because we have an agreement with them on county drains, all right, that you guys approved that agreement. And that is, they will cover costs on projects for us, in return, we cover the at-large costs of the county roads. And so, there's times that they will pave a road instead of putting it into the drain district expense, that'll be limited from the computation of costs. This, however, is a lake level. We only have 112 people being affected by it, or 134 now because of some splits. So, they look at it, and their board looked at it, as this is not for the greater good of the county in managing stormwater, this is for the benefit of the people on the lake that want a certain condition of their lake, all right? And so, they chose not to include that agreement with this project. However, what they did do is they didn't do any road repaving on the area that we'd be tearing up, and the section of road that we would need for trucking, because the heavy trucks are going to have a toll on these residential vehicles. So, when we're finished with that, and then, they will come in and finish the roads that we didn't tear up, and get those put back into good shape that they intended to do. So, in that sense, then, the county as a whole isn't paying for a road and then having it wrecked, which then would be fall back on the lake district, because the damage was done for their project, and whenever we do a project and utilities are damaged, whether it be road, or a power line, or a gas line, and they had the proper easement there before us, then we have to pay for those damages regardless, and that's how this would have worked as well. So, in that way, we're able to control and minimize costs to this project by working with the road commission to make this thing make sense. And their schedule of what they were doing, they revamped it so they could align with this project.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding that correctly, you're saying that in addition to the costs that are there in the bid for the backfill and the pavement, that the road commission is assuming some amount of cost for a portion of the project that's not associated with the drain project?
Well, yeah, it's a cost that they've already had budgeted to redo those roads, it's just when they did it.
And that's above and beyond what we see in this?
Correct. It's not mirrored in this at all.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of how much that is compared to the cost that's built into the bids?
No, I do not.
Okay. I think that's it for now. I may have some additional questions based on my colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair Green. Director Commissioner Yonker, I appreciate you going through the Eagle processes to make sure everything's all set with invasive species and everything. I do want to second what you mentioned, or have a follow-up question to what you mentioned earlier, and also to what some of the residents spoke to, which is that even though the lake, like the cost is being passed down to lakefront properties or like adjacent properties, but it is ultimately like a park, right? So, wouldn't the rising levels also affect the park, and since that is a public property, wouldn't that change the liability to maybe the city?
So, it, the way, and this is, you know, this is the way the legislature drew up the statute, the primary funding mechanism under Part 307 is special assessments to property owners. It is uncommon in Kent County for at-larges to other governmental units, is not always common in other jurisdictions throughout the state. The park parcels are being assessed at an extent, and it was some of the reasoning that I gave earlier during the presentation, one of the park parcels is going to host basically a pump station for the project, so the district is getting the benefit of the township hosting infrastructure. I believe they are doing that for free, and they are also, so that parcel is not being assessed, however, it is hosting infrastructure, so the district doesn't have to buy property to host something on for the lake level. And then, the second parcel owned by the township is being assessed essentially at a backlog value. And the reasoning behind that is there is a lake access portion of that parcel that could, in theory, give access to the lake, also to the district as well, so the public and the district.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions. The first is just, so I was researching this in advance of this meeting and trying to, you know, understand, you know, all the ins and outs, it's my understanding that the drain commissioner is the delegated authority for fulfilling what the court has set as the lake level that needs to be maintained, and we, the Board of Commissioners, are that authority that has delegated that to the drain commissioner. So, what I'm trying to understand, since I'm sitting on this board, is what the, like, liability side, if we don't follow what the Circuit Court has said, so if, for instance, like, the pump isn't built and the drain isn't there to get the water out, if it exceeds that level, what is the liability in that district for, does that liability fall to Kent County in that case?
The short answer is yes, the liability would fall to the county. Some examples of what could happen are the question that I had for the other, that came from the other commissioner, who could petition the court? Any interested party, any interested party could say, you're not, let's say there's another flood event, you're not maintaining the lake at the court-ordered level, you came prepared with a project to the County Board of Commissioners, you didn't go through with it because, you know, some of the, or not some, the residents said that the costs were higher, the liability could be, hey, I'm going to, there's been damage caused, and you weren't maintaining the lake level, hey, you're in contempt of court because you're disobeying a court order to maintain the lake level at least as feasibly as possible, and so forth. So, that would be, that would be the liability to the county.
Okay, thank you. That helps. So, we're effectively obligated to have some solution to reduce the lake level if it exceeds that court order, or we're on the hook, so to speak.
Yeah, and you can see an example of this, it's a 2022 case involving Higgins Lake, and what happened there, and actually, on that lake, is very interesting, the lake was deviating like inches, and an interested party petitioned the court saying, you're not following the, you're not maintaining- And an interested party petitioned the court saying, you're not following the, you're not maintaining the lake level. Circuit court disagreed and said, well, you know, lakes go up and down, it's mother nature, you can't control them. The Court of Appeals said, no, the statute says you need to maintain the lake level. We're going to require you, we're not going to dismiss this case. We are going to send it back to the circuit court and you're going to try to figure out how to maintain the lake level. So I know, in particular, that county has spent a lot on litigation for lake level maintenance. And it only takes, you know, one interested party to do that. As an example.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chair, if I might have a second question quick. Just relating to the, the funding aspect of this. I, I can appreciate in, in all the public comment that we've seen, you know, emails and whatnot on this issue. I can appreciate the concern about the costs, you know, both the increase from the original estimate and just the impact of that on tax bills, um, every year for a number of years. And I'm just curious if there is any option for the residents of the assessment district to decide the parameters of the financing? For instance, my, just quick rough calculations. This, this is proposed at a 20-year bond. If it was a 10-year bond, it would certainly cause higher costs in terms of each year for those 10 years. But overall, save nearly a million dollars in interest. Are those things that are options for the district residents to decide on how they want to finance?
So as, you know, fiduciary for the district, uh, you know, the drain commissioner has worked with bond counsel and financial advisor to try to figure out what the, uh, appropriate length of time for the spread is. And, oh, there he is, Mr. Swetts.
Sorry, Ken.
No, you're okay. You're more well versed on this than I am.
Roger Swetts is a bound coun-, bond counsel for the county can speak to this. Thanks, Roger.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and commissioners and staff. So the, the question here about bonds is without bonds, the property owners would all have to pay the entire share of their assessment on the December 1, 2025 tax bill, which would obviously be a hardship, um, to do that. So the question then is, is can we finance it and how long can we finance it? And I believe the decision was made to go 20 years so that the people that need to have the most leeway in, in having the lowest cost per year would have the benefit of that long-term financing. Now, while that has more interest cost to finance over that time, it does make the annual cost for property owners that need that to be lower. However, people that don't want to finance for 20 years are, um, are allowed under the statute to prepay their special assessment. So somebody could opt out of any financing costs for, for interest by prepaying upfront. Or they could decide to prepay at the 10-year mark or the 15-year mark, wherever it would be. So in that sense, yes, there, we, we've, we've designed this to provide the maximum annual cost relief to the property owners that need it. But other property owners can voluntarily decide they want to make earlier payments if they want.
Just as a quick follow-up, just to make sure I understand that. So, so the, the residents have the option then to, so if they're in the, they're not immediately on the lake, so they're the 0.5 assessment, the 11,800, whatever it was, paid over 20 years, maybe that's 18,000. But they could opt to pay that 11,000 now or pay with the interest for 10 years and kind of balloon payment-esque, like, pay off whatever the remainder is and not absorb the interest for the remainder of the 10 years. Am I understanding correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, taking a look at this, I saw that the survey is first rate, project design, environmental studies first rate. But the problem comes in when it comes to the leveling of these taxes. 122 residents on Dean Lake and you called it a district?
Correct. So, so it's, it's a, the court basically determines what residents can be taxed. They're called special assess, but essentially the district is the group that the court says who has to pay for any project.
And the right that that district had started with the petition where he needed two-thirds. So was that required or could the court even without any input from those residents just say, this needs to happen?
The court doesn't determine whether the project needs to happen. The court says, this is the level you need to maintain.
Right.
The, the level you need to maintain necessitates the project. What the court only determines is who's in the district, what level you need to maintain. The statute says that the court shall order a special assessment district. The older orders, it was not abundantly clear where the court did that. So the court in, in 2022 put the map in, but it's directly in the state law. The court must order a special assessment district, uh, for costs of, of any kind of lake level control project.
So, so once that district is established, my question was again, that when it comes to them accepting these taxes, if they never had that petition, would the court be able to do that?
If they never had the petition, the court, uh, would be able to order a district and, and the statute compels it to order a district.
So in, in most communities where we need millages that have to be voted on, taxes that have to be voted on, they wouldn't have any right to any vote. So why was the petition necessary?
The petition was necessary to ask the court to essentially amend the level and, and go through with the lake level study that would, that would investigate this drain project.
Thank you, because that would mean that this petition was essential to getting this started.
It was, it wasn't the, so what the drain commissioner did, the county board of commissioners on its own can change the level of the lake if it makes a motion. Without a petition. And could, and the drain commis-, and the other way it could happen is with a petition. What the, what happened here is both occurred. You had a resolution and then you had a petition. The other way that the court can be petitioned, if any interested person goes to court and says, I want the level of the lake changed because the court has continuing jurisdiction. Why the drain commissioner required the petition and Ken kind of said, you know, sat on it, ignored it, is he wanted to see at least there was interest from the folks because it's voluntary to require that petition to change the level of the lake and then investigate this project.
Okay.
So it was not, it was not essential for this.
Let me be a little more clear. On the lake level, I totally understand that, and I know you don't want to be here all morning. I don't want to be here all morning. The residents are questioning the financing, the budgeting, the taxing upon them. 122 residents, which they have 71 in a petition, that have either don't want to participate or aren't ready to do this, this new 2.9 million dollar quote. I do quotes every day as a general manager. I tell somebody the price is going to be 300 and then I come back a month later and say their bill is 1,500. They have a right to shop around, they have a right to pause. So my, my questions are going specifically, my questions are going specifically about that petition, if they didn't know this was going to be 2.9 million. If they didn't know, and also did they know that they would be the sole base for the, uh, new taxes on that? For paying for it when they signed the original petition? Did they believe any other municipalities, cities or communities would be involved? So that's really two questions. Did, did they know that they would be the sole base of that? And did they know it would be?
Well, there's, there's, uh, communication that I've learned through this between the residents and their board that I was not privy to or part of. But like I said, I've had the complaints since I've been in this position from this lake and the residents every spring or, or fall, if it's a wetfall. Because the water's high, their docks are underwater, they need relief. And then I would sit on it because usually in a few months it goes away, which they would, until we got to the last stretch. So in order for, because I came to you with a resolution and I wasn't going to put you in front of that resolution unless I knew I had a good percent of the people on that lake backing this. So that's when I told their board. I said, before I even entertain this conversation, I want you to go and, and get signatures from all the people on your lake and I want to see two-thirds. It's not required by law, it's just a number I threw out there to them. So they came back with about 90% at that time. I don't know what they were told. I don't know what they were told, so.
All right, I, I appreciate the passion. I just want to make sure we're maintaining decorum. I'm not telling you guys to stop, but just let's make sure we can continue to go ahead. So thank you, please continue, Ken.
So then I had our attorney, Faye Schultz, draw up a more formal petition, not because I was required to by law, but because when I came to you guys for the resolution, I didn't want this thing to blow up in your face. And so I had 88 and you have a copy of all 88 and there is 122 properties at that time. So you have 88 out of 122, that's a pretty big majority. I felt it was safe to come to you guys with that resolution, which I did and what you passed. Well, why wouldn't you? So at that time, there was conversation with the board, because that's who the representative is. And, and that right now, whenever there's electric bills from the pump, anytime there's repairs on that pump, these people are assessed. That district is currently being assessed. That's not a new district. It's been there since they put that well in in 88 or 86. So that's not a new concept. None of this is new. It just changed the level of the lake because they wanted it higher. And, and so doing, we had to create an outlet.
Thank you. And, and, and thank you for running and through this and doing your due diligence because I've always had respect for your character, your hard work. So thank you for asking for the assessment of finding how many neighbors really felt this was. I go back to, and I understand the level of the lake being raised. But here we're talking about the budgeting and we're talking about the money. And we're talking about the fact that if they went into this thinking other people, not just them, as Dean Lake, when they're getting this survey, if they're, if they're believing that the tax base is going to be spread around for this public park, other people that come there because they don't have the right to tell anybody who can come and go or anything like that. If they believe that, um, and they also believe this was going to be less than a million dollars. And it comes back to three, almost 3 million dollars, basically 3 million dollars. How are we going to sit here and vote on that? I'd also like to say that I took a break in '23 as I, I wasn't on the county commission. You know, I came here in 2016. I wasn't on the county commission. I've gone, during that year, I've gone back through the finance. It didn't seem like enough questions were asked. And I know my colleagues here and how they great, how great they are to listening to their constituents. My other question would be, on those meetings, was Dean Lake, how did we publicly let them know that these important, um, decisions were going to be made at the county? Because now that they know they're here.
So this might be helpful, this may add some context. When the court was basically revising the district, putting the district in the order, every single person in the special assessment district gets notice of that court hearing.
No, I'm talking about the county commission.
But, oh, with the county commission.
For the finance and the board of commissioners in 2023. Because I know my colleagues would have been interested in hearing from Dean Lake.
2021.
2021, there is no computation of costs or no proposed assessment. 2021 authorized going to court. The assessment process is a completely different process in part 307, the statute. Let's say they could do an assessment without a petition. There are many lakes where, let's say a dam fails, they already have a district. They don't have a petition, we're going to rebuild the dam or the dam, it needs maintenance. They do a direct assessment hearing, like that happened here, like everybody got notice to the assessment hearing. But mailing notice, you have a public hearing and then you have the county board meeting.
Then you said that we have liability, right?
You have an obligation as the county to maintain the court ordered lake level.
Okay, I understand obligation, but you said we have a liability.
You would have a liability if you don't follow a court order in a couple of different ways. One, you could be held in contempt of court. Two, someone could petition the court and then cause litigation for Kent County to basically come up with a method to maintain the lake level, especially when it's high.
That makes a lot of sense. So we have a liability, but you said, it's been said that only those 122 residents have an interest. If we have a liability, won't we have to have some type of interest?
You do have an interest because you are the, um, the county oversees the lake level, which has been delegated to your drain commissioner. So you have an interest. The property owners have an interest in the, in the lake level because they're in the district. Those are all the, the, uh, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy has an interest because they regulate lake levels throughout Michigan. Those are the parties that would have an interest.
Thank you for telling me what I already know. But you said, is, you said that the 122 residents had that interest?
They do multiple, multiple entities and, and properties have that, have an interest. They would be an interested party, they could petition the court to do something else.
But multiple, but multiple, multiple people or entities don't have an interest in providing any funding that is only these 122? Because I, I, once again, Mr. Yonker, you know I love your work and you know I love you.
Yeah, no, no, no.
But our job is to help levy taxes and that's kind of why, hey, this went through court, but it's still here today. Why does it require our vote? Does it require our vote for this to go on? And, and if, and if it does require our vote, we have to look at the taxes. We have to look at the levying taxes is what primarily we do. And I just don't believe in taxation without representation. I, 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 I believe there's got to be some type of, who is really looking to help with the funding of this public entity? Or has everybody just decided it's going to be on these 122 people?
All right, we have to please just be respectful and want to refrain from the reactions. I appreciate it, but thank you. We're slipping a little bit on, everybody's slipping a little bit on the decorum here. So if we can just kind of keep it a little bit tighter, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. That's board and guests included, thanks.
Commissioner Womack, you're liable under the fact, under part 307, that this lake level cannot be established without the blessing of this board. That's that resolution. So nothing can be changed with that. Anything I do with that lake level, I have to come back to you for your permission. All right? And so when that, that's where I said, I, I then put a formal questionnaire or petition, if you would, informal, not a legal one, but one that was professionally written to all the lake people to be signed. We sent that to each one of them. So they know that there is action going before the board. Because until I had your blessing, I couldn't do anything. I needed a resolution that then we could put the information together, bring to the court. And that was the process we went forward. So then the taxation, that's also part of the law. The assessment goes to the drainage district or to the lake district, the lake improvement district. And that is like this lake and all the other lakes in this county are the people that live on the lake. Every one of our lakes are, all the boards, the lake improvement boards I sit on with Katie, those are the people that are sitting on the shoreline of that lake that pay for that service.
What took it so long? I've seen some movement on this in 2023. Somebody said it goes back to 2021, which would even be worse. What took it so long from 2021 to get in front of us today? Which has also helped the price increase from the 1.1 to the 2.9 million. So this time, that's critical. What, what took that so long?
Well, I, I can't talk about all the background because there's so many people that were brought into this between Eagle and the engineer and the, and the work they have. And the work I had that year, five petition projects, none of which are under $4 million. It's a lot of work for the engineers in this community and I've kept them pretty busy. And now they're coming out and this is one project. And of those five that were submitted that year, they were one of them. They're the third one to come out out of the five. I have two just bid, this one is ready to bid and there's two, three more that aren't even ready to bid yet. So there's a lot of things that play in. You can't control when you start on a project exactly how fast you're going to move it through. There's a lot of work that goes in behind the scenes.
So if there's going to be other people bidding on this and we don't even know if the 2.9 is the final number?
No, it's- No, it's bid. This is done.
It's a final.
Commissioner, I mean, we, we can come back to you for a second. I want to, we've got some other folks that are ahead. So I want to allow some.
I can delete. It should be tabled until we can get all the information, um, so we don't make the same mistake that was done through finance.
Are you making a motion, Commissioner?
I may after hearing from my colleagues who are.
Not at this moment.
Yes.
Okay. And you can speak again in a minute if, uh, we go through others. Commissioner Hennessy is next.
We received a letter and then we, and heard some public comment this morning about this species, species called milfoil. Now, I'm not familiar with it, but can you just speak to the idea, it, it, you have, you know, as to whether it actually, this project would increase its possible distribution into other waters of this, of the county?
So I'll allow, uh, Mr. Gritters to give maybe more of a scientific answer, the engineer, but the one thing I will say for this project, it has to be permitted by Eagle to create this new outlet. And Eagle evaluates environmental concerns and numerous different concerns. They wouldn't allow the new outlet, the new drain if they, uh, believed in, because they're the regulatory body, that there could be some sort of adverse environmental impact. I don't, I don't claim to be, you know, scientist, but the, the project has to get permitted through Eagle.
Good morning, Board. I don't, I don't have any information on the recent information about the milfoil. I will say though, that all the environmental information that Eagle requested was submitted and considered as part of the permit process. So that's what we've gone through the normal regulatory process to date.
If I could follow up, just, I mean, just not knowing anything about this, but is there, is it possible or is there any suggestion that, that invasive species could be further dispersed through this project?
I suppose so. The, the design of the project, or the project is designed to take water from the lake and send it somewhere else. That's part of maintaining the level. The mechanism for maintaining the level takes water from the very surface and into the pump station then, and then to be pumped out. So depending on the type of species that would have some impact or some play into that question, um, the specific, specifics of the milfoil, I don't have that right now.
I think, Kevin, I know that's a little bit outside of your area of expertise too, to, um, go into further detail on that. It's really a question for Eagle. Um, but obviously we don't have them there. So I appreciate you, you know, giving your insight. Anything else, Commissioner, on that? Okay. Um, Commissioner Teal is next.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. Uh, first, I was hoping that you could speak on, um, the timeline because I know that it's been mentioned tabling here. Uh, we looked at that at, at finance. Um, and I just was hoping somebody could speak on what tabling would potentially do to this project.
Sure. And I think I didn't say my name before. I'm Kevin Gritters with Prentice Newhoff, uh, consulting engineer. Consulting engineer for the drain commissioner. The timeline, the, the project was advertised for bidding publicly. So it was a competitive bid process. The bids were received on April twenty-four. The contract, it's not signed yet, but the, the bid submitted has a ninety-day bid hold on that. So ninety days from April twenty-four, we can do the math. The, the impact beyond that is the, the timing of construction. And obviously we've seen what subsequent years of inflation can do, uh, with project costs. So there's that aspect of it. The other is, we've done coordination with the county road commission about the timing of their projects. And like was mentioned before, they have delayed some work in this neighborhood, uh, to not have recurring costs and duplicate costs for overlapping of project scopes. And so delaying this work, I don't have numbers specifically, but delaying this project, um, could also delay their work or they might decide to do their work anyways because it needs to happen and then have those duplicative efforts. So I don't have specific numbers for what impact delaying the project could have, but I would say there is the potential for additional increased costs.
And if I may, if I may add, so if you have a ninety-day bid hold, let's say table, you delay, you pass that bid hold, you no longer have the bid, you have to rebid the project. You had a competitive bidding process. It, I think it would discourage contractors, especially if you did not go through, did not move forward picking the two bidders. You may not have a bidder for the project or it may be, uh, even further increased cost. So I would be very concerned about passing that bid hold or quite frankly, rebidding the project because it was publicly bid.
Thank you. Um, and then one of the issues that was, um, mentioned in the letter from the association was multiple contingency funds. Um, so let's say the project goes perfectly. Uh, what happens to those contingency funds at the end of the project?
Yes. So, uh, that, it was a good question from the association. Um, the contingency funds get put essentially into an account that is for the benefit of the Dean Lake Level District. It would be used towards maintenance of the infrastructure, operating the pumps, uh, if there's electricity involved and so forth. So you don't have to assess the, the district for those regular operation costs. Then when it's exhausted, then you would do another assessment, uh, that's, it's very typical on lakes. Uh, that, that's what happens. So in best case scenario, don't touch the contingency. Uh, hopefully these property owners would not be assessed for many years.
Okay. One more, if I may, Chair. Um, I've had a couple of constituents reach out regarding the appeals process if this were to pass. Um, and it's been like pulling teeth, getting answers. Um, I did establish that it's the circuit court that they would appeal to. What, what paperwork or what forms would they need to fill out just so that they're aware of their rights?
So it's a little bit tough because I'm a fiduciary of the, of the drain commissioner and, you know, that would be an adverse suit against the drain commissioner. What I would say is, it is not like a tax tribunal appeal. There is no form. It is basically, uh, to my knowledge, I haven't done an appeal against an assessment before, but to my knowledge, it would be a complaint again, uh, that, that would be written and it would likely, you know, either a person or an attorney would have to write it. There's not a form. It's a, like a normal court filing kind of document.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, does anybody else have a first? Commissioner Merchant?
I'm just curious, where are the lake levels currently stand and have they, have we been over them since twenty-twenty-two? Is it a fluctuating thing?
Yeah, according to, um, Tom Dugan, he's the one that monitors the, uh, well currently, get kicks it on, shuts it off as needed. And he said that he's been running that well pretty consistent as of our meeting on Thursday or Wednesday, uh, because the lake has been low. So right now it's, it's, it's on the low side or just hovering at the lake level, the established lake level. So because it's been dry.
I, I think it'd be appropriate to, I know this is out of course, but Mr. Dugan, if you can speak to that as the person that is managing that.
The drain, the drain commission, uh, a number of, uh, years ago, a year ago, uh, established official, uh, installed gauge at my seawall. Uh, I monitor that almost every day. I take a picture of the, uh, current level and I, I, uh, maintain that and I occasionally update the, uh, drain commission. But right now, the, uh, lake level is approximately two inches below the authorized level of seven oh six point eight. And that, I have basically a year and a half of, uh, documented evidence of what the lake level has been over that period of time.
Thank you. Commissioner Merchant, did you have a follow-up? Okay. Commissioner Ponstein?
Look, no, I don't have a question. I want to be respectful.
Sure.
I've got comments.
Sure. Uh, yeah, certainly. I mean, it, we're kind of have both here. I, I know we started as, uh, questions, but, um, I anticipate this is going to be both. So, um, we can come back to you, Commissioner. We won't use your opportunity there. Uh, Commissioner DeBoer and then Faber.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm wondering, is there like a statute of limitations on when someone could file suit against us for not holding to the lake, lake?
No, no, the court has continuing jurisdiction as long as there's a lake level order, which they'll probably be in perpet, perpetuity.
Okay. So they can file a suit at any time based on previous, um, property damage for a high lake level?
My understanding would be yes. I think what we would say, I, I, you know, there would be a multitude, you would have to see exactly what they would, what they would allege. I, I think, um, there hasn't been, to my knowledge, a case where, you know, a defense was brought, well, you, you brought this action too, too late or too long. Um, but I don't, I'm not aware of any statute of limitation in part three oh seven or any citing case law that says a statute of limitation. I think the court may use common sense and say, if you're bringing something up that happened thirty years ago, that, you know, too bad, but.
And there hasn't, has there at any time since, um, twenty twenty-two, was it, or twenty twenty-one, that we've exceeded the lake? I mean, quite significantly, I guess, like more than an inch or two of the lake level?
I would defer to Mr. Mr. Dugan, uh, on that or, or, or the drain commissioner. It sounds like the answer is no. Yep.
Commissioner Faber?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, some of what we heard and, and got in public comment was, um, sort of the disconnect between folks signing the petition, uh, in the two-thirds level and then possibly not having the opportunity to look at those options or have that petition or a similar petition come back once costs started to get established. Um, could someone speak to, uh, sort of the process? Um, are there examples of where we would go back to the community for a two-thirds vote once more costs are established? The petition I saw really was people signing to have the lake studied. Um,
There is no mechanism for the special assessment process for a petition. It's MCL three two four, three oh seven one four that talks about the special assessment hearing process and three oh seven eleven. Basically discusses if there is infrastructure that needs to be built on a lake to maintain a lake level, the delegated authority shall develop costs in a project. And then there's a public hearing and then ultimately the assessments and the, the, the role, uh, would be considered by the county board of commissioners.
And at that public hearing, we did not have, um, significant pushback on the project at that point.
I think there were similar concerns as you see today, and I think it's in your packet as to the cost of the project, uh, uh, being higher than the estimated costs that were presented in the lake level study, uh, in court, which were pre-bid costs and of course, not in the same detail.
And then just, uh, big picture, my understanding from finances, what I heard there was that, uh, this pump may get triggered occasionally. Um, I think someone said, you know, over the life of this project, um, a couple of times. Um, so what were some of the other alternatives that we looked at? Uh, we heard today that there's a number of drains coming into that lake. Um, so could someone speak to, uh, why we settled on this particular design? Thank you.
Yeah, the, the lake level study looked at some alternatives. Um, you mentioned a comment made previously about frequency of operation. Uh, the pump, it, it, there's a lot of factors that play into it. Precipitation is largely one. And in, in prolonged dry periods, the lake level would be lower, water would be added to the lake, but it's possible that for a time, it doesn't go above the lake level to a point at which this, this outlet pump would turn on. With the level managed more closely and in a tighter band, it's, it's likely that with the level maintained closer to the normal lake level, that a little bit of rain would get it to the point of kicking it on. So with no outlet control, the level probably stays lower. So it, it all depends on the environmental factors. When it comes to different options looked at for an outlet, we did look at that. There's, there's really no feasible option for a gravity sewer outlet. So where it doesn't, does not need to be pumped. So this lake has, has, has been mentioned previously is a local low area, basically a bathtub with no drain in the bottom. And so the only way for water to get out of it would be a, a pump of some sort. Now, water evaporates, water seeps into the ground. So that, those natural mechanisms do happen, but for a controlled and managed outlet, it would, it would need to be a pump of some sort. So we looked at different locations for that. And the project that was selected, which is what we're talking about today, is the one that is the most feasible. It has a location downstream that has capacity to handle this water and it's in a location that works overall, um, as well. So it's, it's a combination of a lot of factors that brought us to this point of saying this is the, the most feasible prudent option for an outlet.
I'm gonna take a moment out of what we normally do and where the chair would go last and just kind of ask a couple of questions as we continue on. I'd like to sort of draw an artificial line between kind of as Commissioner Ponstein suggested, where we've asked questions of these guys and then we move toward discussing what we as a board do now. Um, but I know they're willing to answer, willing and able to answer other ones after we get past into that. So I just had a few things here. Um, the computation of cost, I, I don't know who this is a question for, probably the drain commissioner's office, but we, um, I thought we had a pretty good understanding in the finance committee that we would, um, get sort of a unrolled computation of the cost. Um, the one I'm looking at right now is the exact same one I was looking at in that meeting. Um, and my issue with it is primarily that you've got, uh, this line for, we've got a whole lot of breakdown on the cost of the financing, uh, which is great and I appreciate. Uh, that only totals a hundred and seventeen thousand. We've got two million, which is seventy percent of this thing, under construction estimate. So I, I just, I really wanted to see a, a kind of just a, the next level of detail on that. And I just don't know, uh, I guess my question is, why aren't we? Uh, because I thought that was pretty clear when we were in our finance meeting that we would.
I, I can start and then I'll let Ken, uh, chime in. So the first thing is, part three oh seven requires a, a specific form for a computation of costs with certain categories. I know that's probably chaired, not what you're asking for, but when you're approving a computation of costs, uh, that, that is, that is what. I believe in the board packet, there was the bid tabulation, which would show the unit prices for the, the, the two million dollars or so in construction. Um, and then I'll let Ken chime in.
Is there, do we know where that is there? Uh, what, I think we've got about two hundred pages in here on this, uh, issue.
There, there's really nothing more to roll out.
I think page two fifty.
Other than the bid tabulation, that's already been put out there. There's no other cost unrolled because I don't have the contractor's breakdown, nor do I want to see that. So I'm not sure what you're asking for when you say it's not rolled out. There's nothing more to add.
I'll, I'll come back to that in a second. Um, I, I just, I, okay. Um, the, the question on the, Commissioner Teal asked the question on the contingency costs. Um, and I'm, I know there was an answer given, but I'm still a little bit unclear on what happens. Let's say that we come in under the, um, and I guess Rogers might be a question for you, but whoever. Um, I understand that I learned, uh, yesterday that we can't look at the contingency cost just as the construction of the project itself. It's intended to be the benefit to the, um, whatever costs are incurred over the twenty-year lifetime of the bond, so that we don't have to go back to, um, residents and issue another bond and say, we're going to add on to that at what we've already been paying. But my question that I'm still a little bit unclear on, and maybe I just didn't hear it correctly, was, um, what happens if we don't use the contingency over the cost or the time of the, the bond?
It is left in a fund for the benefit of the Dean Lake Level District. So this district will have reoccurring expenses with that pump station, with potentially augmentation wells, with engineer inspections of the infrastructure. So all that money that is, that would normally be assessed in a, you know, if you didn't have a big construction project, his operation costs would pull from the monies that have been allocated towards the lake and it would stay only towards the lake.
So if we, um, let's say, uh, in fifty years or forty, we need a new pump. Is that fund balanced then that, if, if there is one, is that fund balanced then allocated? I see the commissioner.
Yes. The short answer is that yes, it is.
Okay. Um, I also, that was a question, I know this is for Kevin, um, that I didn't ask prior, uh, what do we expect the general lifespan to be on one of these, a pump of this type? Um, I know we can do upgrades and, or repairs and that kind of thing, but how long till the whole thing kind of needs to be replaced?
Yeah, those one of the considerations that we. Yeah, those were one of the considerations that we factored into the design, and with the uncertainty of operation, selected a pump that would sit above the ground. There's no mechanical parts, there's no electrical parts, there's no physical moving parts that will be down under the water level. So we selected that to try to reduce maintenance, reduce any, or reduce the frequency of maintenance and repairs, so it's all sitting in an enclosure above the ground, protected from the elements, but not in the water. So normal, normal pump systems like this usually figure on 15 to 20 years for pumps needing to be replaced, electrical components needing to be replaced. That's for systems that more in a wastewater application will run every single day. This will not be that, so it could, it could be longer than what I'd said before.
I'm more concerned about this one not running as often and being like an old car that you don't start up once a year. And so I, I, hopefully we will get a little more life out of it. I'd hate to see it go that short. Kevin, I know you're being conservative. Worst-case scenario, where it's not going to run every day. It just won't, but.
Yeah, and there's been some discussion about operational schemes and ways to make sure the system stays exercised, similar to what you do for an emergency generator, run it once a week for an hour. There, there's an option that, that could be discussed. So there's ways to, with some preventative maintenance, make sure to extend the life of this as much as possible.
Okay. The other question I had on the contingency, sorry, I hopped around a little bit there. Is that pretty standard? How do we estimate the contingency line in the computation of costs? Is that a percentage of the overall cost of the project? And I guess my question then to the other end, I understand that it goes to the benefit of the Drain District over the course of the time, but the, my concern is we're asking the people that are living there for these 20 years, whether it's this group or the next, or, you know, some of you guys will be around, some of you won't. But I, I worry about them bearing the brunt of the financing on it and then not using. So I guess, how confident are we that that's close to what we think we'll need over the course of that period? That's gazing into a crystal ball, I understand, but.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're pretty confident. The way that we designed the contingency is, it is, I, I, I respect the, the perspective of the Lake Association, Mr. Walter's letter. I, I respect that and how, you know, his, his comments about the contingency, which was, you know, about $75,000 that was being discussed, although it's 2.9 million. However, we write, the statute allows 15%. We're at 10%. That's probably as low as I'd, I'd like to, to see this, for, for this. And for example, in other projects that I do, that I assist communities with, counties with, a lot of them do right up to 15%, just, just by way of an example, of many different counties.
I appreciate that. What you're saying, MCL allows you to go up to 15?
Yeah, it's 30714, let's see, no, it's not 30714, I think it's 30712, sub 1, let's see.
It's okay, you've been up here a long time, you're more specific than I need. You've been, we've been putting you on, you've been on the hot seat for quite a while here, so I, I get it.
No, that's okay, yeah, mild scramble.
But it is, but it is, you, you can go up to that.
You could go up to 50%, and it's very common, actually, for, to go up to 15%, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to transition a little bit on my questions into one of the things that, I think most of the questions I had that were brought up in the letter from the association, and I appreciate, I've spoken to Brian a couple of times, I appreciate the due diligence on narratives that we've gotten from the association and from neighbors. And, and for those that are, you know, have an opinion that differs slightly from that of the association, I know, I thought it was funny that Mr. Harple, so the only thing we could agree on was that we, we couldn't agree on anything. But I know that's how it is sometimes in any neighborhood, especially on a lake. But the question that I had, one of the things that was brought up was the county financing this. I mean, basically the suggestion that we skip the middleman, and the county then take our own cash effectively and, and put out, you know, to finance this. Roger, I wanted to speak to you on that, but I wanted Al to talk about really briefly what our policy has been per the action of the board a couple years ago on that, because this was something we kind of talked through. Is it something we can and or should do to take that money and basically act as the bank? And it'd be the cheapest money theoretically that we could get for the residents, but it comes with restrictions. So Al, if you want to kind of talk to that.
Sure, and this comes to us from June of 2021, and the Drain Commissioner had just finished work on multiple drains and could see more work coming up. And so the board did adopt a policy at that time that if a drain project did not exceed $1 million, that the county would loan the money at the current rate of interest for up to 10 years to help finance that drain. So that's.
Six, Al, that's six. If you want to do 10, I'm all on.
Six years.
We've been running under six.
Okay, well, great. But a million dollar total on the project.
That's helpful. I think, I don't know who best to answer this, but it was a discussion that we had. It's probably a number of people, but what does that look like for the board's edification, were the county to be the sort of financing entity on a project like this? Because again, I think the biggest pro on that is the fact that the, the interest rate is significantly lower and cheaper for our ratepayers, but there's challenges that come with that for the county, too. I'm being told that that might be best answered by Jeff, Roger, so. Appreciate your eagerness and willingness to let Roger answer. Jeff needed to get back up here. It's been a long.
That's right. Let's go back to that financial overview a minute, though. So 2021, when that went to the board, it was discussed extensively, what's the maximum lake time and then the maximum out the county would want to borrow the drains, because there's risk at the county, right? So I don't know how many other drain projects we have going. This one's almost $3 million. I think there's several other in the pipeline, some four, five million dollar projects. So how much of your fund balance are you willing to risk over what timeframe and what interest rate? So we, when we do these, we give them the 20-year bond buyer rate at the time. But if we had done this in '21, the rates were zero, right, or 20 before COVID. Now the rates are up to 5%. So if we gave this drain away at that rate in '20, we'd be losing funds, because we could invest our own money at a higher rate today. So the risk is, what do we balance for the residents, to help the residents out, to keep their rates low, with the risk of the county holding too much of their fund balance aside and extending their rate at a fixed rate for however, you know, length of time? So that's kind of the risk.
And then I think the other thing, thank you, and then I think the other thing related to that is, outside of the dollars and cents, what goes into, God forbid, somebody who's here goes bankrupt, for some reason we can't collect on the payment. We're acting, we're doing the kind of thing that banks do in terms of trying to track down people, and I mean, it's just not in our wheelhouse. I don't know if that's a better question for you, Jeff, or council.
Probably council. I mean, it could be Roger or corporate council. I, you know, and I'm indifferent, but I just, I think it's important to kind of understand what that looks like on the back end.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chair, I don't think that that differs from whether a bond would be issued in the bond market, or if the, if the county financed this. This is going to be paid for by special assessments, and if assessments go delinquent, no matter how it's financed, it would just go through the delinquent tax collection process. It wouldn't be some kind of other collection by the county, just the way you collect any other delinquent taxes.
Okay, so it would be the same thing, a process that Pete helps us run downstairs on that. Okay. The last thing, Roger, I know this is a question for you, and then I'll let the rest of my colleagues get back into it. I know that this, and this is for the edification of the board, too. We discussed briefly that this motion per our board rules requires the full faith and credit of the board, which requires a two-thirds vote of members-elect. I guess I just wanted to add some color to that and say, I don't know, Roger, if you had anything to share on that from your perspective, or Al, or Linda, but I just wanted to kind of get some explanation on that.
Yeah, so there, there are two different things being done by this resolution. One is to approve the project costs and the special assessment rule. That requires a simple majority. The second thing done by this resolution is to, for the county to pledge its full faith and credit to the issuance of the bonds. That's a second issue, and that requires a two-thirds of the members-elect of the Board of Commissioners to do the bonds. So if you only approve by a simple majority, there would be an assessment, that part of the process would be triggered and moved forward, but we would not be able to, would not be able to finance the bonds out in the bond market with the county's full faith and credit, which will be important to being able to issue bonds, because obviously with the county's bond rating, that would make a tremendous difference in cost, and without that, it might be necessary to, to levy this all in one year. So that's the dynamic between the, the two different parts of the resolution.
Okay. I just think that's, I want the board to keep that in mind as we're moving to our deliberations here. So with that, I will go back to the list. Well, I will invite, again, if there's anyone that would like to speak for the first time. I think we've covered most of us here. If not, we have a lineup for the second. Commissioner Stec is at bat, and Commissioner Boujack is on deck. Commissioner Pack was in the hall.
For a second, and you mean final comment.
Final, second.
I don't know if I can get that kind of a commitment out of you, but.
So there's been some questions raised here, not just about the county potentially financing this, but the county actually paying the cost of this. And I don't know, maybe that's a question to Al. Would, if the county just threw in the $3 million, would that not be inuring a specific benefit to particular property owners that are not allowed?
Yes, that's how I would view that, is that, you know, and part of it depends on where would we get the money from to pay for it. And if it's general fund balance, then there are rules on not spending general fund balance for individual benefit. And so, yes, that would be my position. Whether there's some unique thing under the drain code that provides an exception to that, I wouldn't know that. But for any other area of county finance, we would say this would specifically confer an individual benefit and isn't for the good of the, of the whole. Yes.
I was thinking that's what you would say, but then I was going to defer back to 307. Is there anything in the statute that specifically allows the public body, the county, to be the funding agency?
The, the statute would allow the county to do so, although I would defer to, you know, county corporate council as well as the county administrator has to, because different counties do it different ways. But I don't read anything in part 307 alone that would prohibit the county from essentially paying for the project. The one challenge, practical challenge is, you have a number of lake level districts and lake improvement boards throughout the entire county.
Yep.
Which.
The precedent, I'm very aware.
May continue that when you do one, they tend to generally want to be treated fairly, especially if you're paying 100%. So it is a little bit of a slippery slope if you, if you do that.
Very aware of that. So the, the thing I wanted to follow up is, this, this petition thing just kind of threw me off initially, because it, it made it appear as if the petition from the property owners is sort of the active mechanism that sort of created all of this. The fact is, this goes back to the court's order that sets the level, and when it does that, it's the county that has the duty to comply with that.
Yes.
Not individual property owners that are in the lake. They don't have the duty to go out and take care of that problem.
No, they don't. It's the county's responsibility.
All right.
And it was set forth in 1965 originally, and, you know, updated throughout the years.
So the petition really is informative, but it's not a legally operative.
Correct, yes.
So what I'm trying to understand, again, getting back to the duty question, and Commissioner Coleman asked some of these things, but the duty under the court order is basically directed to the county, and we in turn direct it to the commissioner, the Drain Commissioner, to fulfill that responsibility.
Correct. The Drain Commissioner, essentially, if you put it kind of in simplistic terms, does the day-to-day operations to fulfill the, the duty, and then the county board is responsible for essentially overseeing the Drain Commissioner to the extent you need to, and then this role that you're here reviewing assessments and computations of the costs.
And before the more recent change, was actually increase the level, we had a lower level set by the court order.
Yes.
And so it'd be easier for nature to exceed that level before they did the change.
That would be my understanding, yes.
And when that happens, if a particular property owner is aggrieved by the fact that we didn't do something by that, their property is now flooded because we didn't solve the problem that the court required us to do, they then, as I understand it, would have the standing to go into that court and say, the county's violated your order, thus the term contempt, and they acted in contempt, and therefore am entitled to whatever remedies or relief the court deems appropriate for our contempt.
Correct. That, that is how I would view it, and that is how I believe the statute would operate.
And that remedy could be either an assessment of damages, all right, that property was damaged $100,000, county pay up, or it could be that, and county, you didn't do what I told you to do, do it.
Yes, yes. The, the normal powers of contempt, which are pretty, they can be pretty severe.
Right.
It could also be, if it's very egregious, even civil contempt, you could be put in jail, so delegate authority.
Well, that's the Drain Commissioner's.
Yes, that's right.
But, but. But, but the uniqueness of this is the duty is setting here with the county to make sure we've complied with this.
Yes.
The damaged party are the property owners who are potentially at risk if we don't do it, and the payors are the property owners.
Correct, correct. And that, Lake Level Act has been essentially this way for century.
So really, it's, to me, it comes down to this, this is the county managing our risk. Do we want to continue to violate the court order and take the risk that we're going to have another high-water event? And if we do, it'd be great if all the property owners just swallowed the costs, but they could come back and hold the county responsible.
That, that's correct. And then the other practical result is, it's tough when you're in a position like this where the water hasn't been high again. But to do a project, bid out a project when you have an emergency, try to permit a project when you have an emergency, that is just not, that, that's not the prudent way to, to go.
Right, right, okay.
To, to that light, Commissioner, I liked, I, and this is Commissioner Womack, is struggling. In the drain code, it works different than why we normally look at life and society, all right? The drain code is written to protect the minority. It's not the majority. It's not a majority rules law.
We're Republicans.
So, so when a person is being harmed by high water, I have to go and, and I get petition, that does take a petition, I have to have a hearing, and everybody presents their case, and that board of determination cannot, by law, talk about cost. It's not even part of the discussion. The cost doesn't matter. The need matters. And so when I look at that law and the way Michigan looks at managing our stormwater, because it's public infrastructure, then I look at 307, and I kind of see some of the same similarities. So in this case, we have people that are harmed, and I think Commissioner Stec brought through where we come in with liability that follows if one person's harmed. The difference right now than before now, we didn't know if we could get an outlet, because there's no stream, it's all built up residential. Until we did that study, we could now determine there's an outlet. So now we have no defense, no excuse to fix the issue.
So I think that was still my question. I had one more. So in balancing a reasonable approach to comply with the court order, to fulfill and put in a mechanism, that's really what we're dealing with here. But we're doing it on the financial back of the property owners. It seems to me it's compelling on us to, to find the most cost-effective, effective way of doing that. And, and maybe this isn't a question for you so much as it is for the Drain Commissioner. Is this solution the most cost-effective, reasonable solution?
Well, we believe so. When we worked through this with, with Prining Newhoff, we were looking at, what do we need to make this all happen? Thus, you'll see in some of the specs, there's only one pump in that, in that pump station, not two. And most of our, our other lift stations that we have, there's two pumps, because you need one to back up if one fails. We don't have that. We're, we're working on one. We believe we have some flexibility if it goes out, and part of the maintenance will be a contract with a company that will maintain this and do the regular maintenance that's needed to keep the system operating. So there, there's no extra. It's, it's strictly a system to do a, a job that has to be done and be as effective as we can get it. There's nothing do a job that has to be done and be as effective as we can get it. There's nothing perfect, but this will keep a pretty close tolerance.
Thank you. And then just finally for Commissioner Hennessy, mill foil is a four-letter word to a lakefront owner.
We have, thank you, Commissioner Steck. If we were at Disney World, Commissioner McLeod would have the Lightning Lane pass because she hasn't gone yet, so she goes to skip the line here.
Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to skip the line. I just had a fairly simple question, and I just wanted to acknowledge as well that a lot of these questions we did talk about in finance, and we decided as a committee to move it forward to the larger board so that we could have this conversation that we're having now. So I just want to make it clear that there was no injustice that happened in finance. We brought it here for a reason, so that the rest of the board could, could, you know, bring their thoughts and comments about the situation. The first thing I want, I just wanted to just get an understanding. So where, this, this action request, we're, we're voting on two things, to approve the special assessment role and to authorize the use of bonds to finance it. Can we, what would be the outcome of approving one without the other? I know that there's the 90-day bid hold, there's all sorts of dominos that are attached to this project, and I think that that's why these were combined together. But if we approved the special assessment role or didn't approve the assessment role and decided that we wanted to approve the bond, or, you know, how, how would this be, this whole project be impacted if we did not approve these two things together?
It would be the same, it would be the same domino effect, potentially, because we'd have to go back to the board to resolve, let's say, the assessment role or the bond to, to do the, the kind of the same thing. Essentially, if you approve the project costs and the assessment role, there would be no financing mechanism to pay for the project, pay the contractor for the project. So then you would, you'd be stuck. Or the mechanism would be charging those large assessments just flat to the property owners, which is why they, they wanted to spread it over 20 years. If you just approved the bond and you didn't approve the project, it would be the kind of conversation I had about there's no, you didn't approve the project, bid hold goes, you have to rebid it, maybe you don't get people bidding on it again. So it's, it's, it's a challenge.
So thank you for clarifying that, because I think that's important for us to kind of have an understanding of. And then secondly, I would just ask, we talked a little bit about the concern from the residents about who's on the special assessment and who's not, and the appeal process and, and all of that. If we were to approve the action request as it is now, the, I'm assuming that the appeal process timeline would go into effect at that point in time?
That's correct. It would start, you know, after your approval, and then it was that 15-day period.
Right. And, and then just to be clear as well, from what we got from finance, the appeal process would be the, the residents appealing for their specific property and not for the, the larger district itself, or would they be able to contest the, the whole role?
It'd be for the, for their property themselves.
Okay. So just, again, just so I can make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of understanding this, we really do have to consider these things together in the way that we're doing them, or else it's, we run the risk of not being able to move forward with the project itself, because our contractors that we've already sent out the RFP to, that were already in the 90-day hold period, the, the council that was at the finance meeting kind of walked us through that, the implications of not meeting that 90-day hold. And I think you've done a good job with kind of explaining how that works. But it seemed to be like something that is mandated from the state, that we, that we, that we maintain that, that we do that 90-day hold process. Is that correct?
It'd be in the common construction contract. I don't know if it's mandated from the state, but there's that, there's that bid hold project. Let's say the bid hold ended, then you had to rebid it. Part 307 requires the delegated authority to basically do a public bidding system, so you'd have to rebid it. You'd probably lose your construction slot. And then, again, the same issue with the, the prior bidders, you know, if they, if they weren't selected, including the lowest responsible bidder, not being selected, and then having them rebid on the same project, just knowing contractors doing this kind of public infrastructure type of work, I, I feel like they would be apprehensive to, to want, want to do it again for, for maybe the same reasons, while they're, they're not going to go through with it.
Okay. And then if I may, just one last question for the, the engineering staff. If we don't start this project this fall or, or this year, what is the likelihood that we would be able to continue within the same cost structure if this couldn't happen until next year?
The way the contract is structured is there's a milestone completion date for the pipeline to be this fall, fall of 2025, and the pump station construction, primarily due to lead times, getting the equipment here, for the project to be 100% complete next spring, very early summer. So should this not go forward now, it basically would nullify the, the current bid and require a rebid process, which for reasons stated previously, there's, there's definitely risk with that.
If I can just do one follow-up. So in looking at the details that were provided on the construction costs themselves, it looks like the cost of the pump materials and equipment is right around 1.2 million. And if I'm understanding what you shared in finance and in terms of how the cost has escalated over the years, it's mainly related to the pump, is that correct? Like the pump and all of the, the things that are related to that, not necessarily the cost of paving and all of those things, but really the materials themselves?
Generally, yes. We have seen construction costs across the board go up significantly in the last five years. The, the biggest increases that we've seen on municipal-type projects has been related to pumping systems. That's where we've seen the biggest increase. But I would say it's an, it's an across-the-board increase in construction costs.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. We're back to seconds with Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. This will be my final. Rarely, as a commissioner, have I sat through hours of testimony on a resolution where we've had to have legal representation and professional representation, public comment, and, you know, it's obviously very comp, this is obviously a very complicated issue. And after listening to all the legalese, the, the state statutes, the circuit court judgments, the legal responsibilities to the Board of Commissioners based on decisions on lake levels, and the responsibilities of the drain commissioner to, you know, achieve all these, all the above, I would be inclined to support the resolution. I would not be supportive of tabling this, because I feel that it only would increase the cost of this project. So in speaking to the cost of the project, I like to put that into perspective. Basically, what you're getting is an insurance policy over the next 20 years that costs $1,100 approximately a year. And I like to relate that to something that I'm very familiar with, which is flood insurance. I purchased a home in 2025 on the Thorn Apple River, and at that time, the decision I made was based on the cost partially of what that flood insurance would cost me. It was $650 a year, and I thought that was reasonable. Today, I am paying $2,400 a year, 20 years later, and there's no end in sight. And my guess would be that 20 years from now, I'll be paying $5,000 a year for federal flood insurance. So putting with that as a perspective, the homeowners in this district have a cost of $1,100 for the next 20 years. It's fixed. In 20 years, you'll be free and clear of that obligation, and you will still have in place a mechanism to protect your properties and into perpetuity with this county board. So I will be voting yes on this, and I appreciate, you know, the public comment. I understand the concern about costs, but I just want to share that story that, you know, you're dealing with a fixed cost for a fixed amount of time. It could be worse.
Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few questions did pop up for me. So I think the first one is for Mr. Gritters, actually. Is there such a thing as a temporary pump, where we could come in with something with, when the lake level is high, or when it's sort of heading to that height, rather than installing something so permanent?
There is such thing, yes.
And was that explored at all when the engineering estimates were sort of, because I, I read through and I really appreciated sort of the four scenarios that were laid out in the engineering study, right, and how three of them were really infeasible. I didn't see a temporary pump as one of those options, and I'd be curious how that one was evaluated relative to a permanent pump.
Yeah, it was, it was discussed. It's been some time now. So all the details I don't recall, but my, my opinion now would be, it gets back to the obligation aspect of maintaining levels consistently and reliably and not requiring a lot of personal individual interaction and time spent to do so. So yes, it would be possible to rent a pump, put a pipe out into the lake, set up a temporary pipe, roll it out half a mile winding through these neighborhood streets. The, whether that's realistic, I would say from a, from a public infrastructure standpoint, I would say no. It can happen at any time of year where the water would need to be pumped. So that's where, from an engineering side of things, we look at what's the most reliable system and the, the system that can be operated the most reliably and consistently. And to us, that's not a, a temporary system is not that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, you know, where I was coming out from with that question was, we heard earlier today in public comment, and I think in lots of the emails that we received, that the situations that created the high water level in 2018, 2017, 2019, 2020 were really abnormal events. And, you know, I think I've heard them called 50-year flood events, right? So maybe even more, right? You know, in terms of that lake level. So that, that's really what I'm getting at with that. I think the next question is either for Drain Commissioner or for our council. You know, we've heard that the contingency costs would then be rolled into operational, operational fund. Do we have an estimate of what those annual operational costs are, and how many years, if we didn't pay any of the contingency, how many years of annual operation costs might maybe be? I'm just trying to think, you know, if we are assessing a significant amount of contingency that goes into this annual operations cost, and then it's pre-funding in perpetuity those operational costs, I don't know that that's a reasonable assessment.
So you asked a question we were never prepared to answer. There's electric bills that go into that pump. Now that, that well has to, had to be rebuilt, so that's part of this cost as well, is redoing the well. I don't, do we have a cost on what that well?
That was $38,000.
$38,000 for the well to be. So I would expect that over 20 years, we're going to probably have to do that again.
Okay.
Especially the use we're getting. And the other pump, again, will be getting estimates from companies that would do the maintenance, a contractor.
Yeah.
Maintain that. I don't have that number either.
I mean, my, my quick math, right, is that the contingencies between the contingencies built into the construction bids and the extra 10% on top, we're nearing about $300,000, maybe $350,000 of contingency on this project, right? Because it's 10% of the total budget.
Correct.
Plus some extra inside of.
Correct.
The engineering estimate. That seems like it would be a lot of years of operational costs if we didn't go through any of those.
I, I, I would agree, and I would hope so. Yeah. I would, I would expect that.
Okay.
I think a little more than the whole. That's kind of weak.
And then, you know, still related to the contingency, that 10% is calculated as the gross, on 10% of the gross project cost. Everything, you know, I look at the computation of costs, it's 10% of everything above it, right?
Correct.
But some of those line items, we've already actually incurred the cost and paid those invoices, right? So the initial survey, the engineering estimate that happened in 2021, that's included in here.
Correct.
But we're assessing an extra 10% contingency on top of that one.
Based on. And, and that's the formula that the construction industry has in what 307 allows. It doesn't specify what that cost is generated from. It's just set cost of a project. And the rule is 10%, well, they go up as high as 15, but 10%, I've been a contractor my whole life, so 10% has always been a pretty comfortable number that is not exorbitant and usually falls within the range that we're going to use up.
Yeah, and I think what I'm getting at is, you know, the total contingency that we got is 10% of the gross estimate, but it's higher of what is still to come. Right? I mean, if we're, if we're thinking of the contingency as what we could use if costs increase in some space, right, if that's, if that's the purpose of a contingency fund, the amount that we have yet to pay out on this estimate of cost and this cost comparison, right?
Are you talking about maybe like unforeseen things found in construction, the, the cost or something?
Well, I'm saying if we're, if we're budgeting an extra 10% on something we've already paid, we don't really need to budget 10% on something that we already paid.
Well, well, that is, that, there's, there's an element of that, but I would say that the computation of costs, if you look at the number, that's the significant cost, it's the construction cost. It's not the already paid cost. Other things I would mention is, you know, for example, there, there's my time or our firm's time on the, on the computation of cost. That doesn't, that didn't include, you know, all of the extra activities related to the hearings and so forth, as well as, you know, the engineer's time working with stakeholders and so forth. Let's say there's an issue during construction that requires more engineer time. That could be another item where that contingency, you may think it's kind of already expended cost, but it, but there, there could be additional issues. Let's say there's an issue with construction that requires some legal help. Let's say there's a requirement for an easement, or there's a utility issue. You hit consumers' utility, someone's utility. Those are things that could, that are not really accounted for in the computation of cost that the contingency would, would also cover.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. I think my final question is, you know, we talked about this delay and the timeline starting in 2021. You know, we've heard from, from Uken that there's engineering delays, there's construction delays, there's a lot of things that, that we're not privy to in that delay process. Were we ever in the place where we were ready to go on our end and we were waiting for somebody else, like Eagle or Construction, or vice versa? Were we ever ready to go, had everything lined up, and we just held?
No. We were never at a point. And, and so to say one thing would set us back. I mean, we have five major projects being worked, and at any one point in time, one could be making big progress, and one would be in a stalemate. And so then, a lot of those will be, well, we got to wait for Eagle's permit, and you, you don't speed them, they're at their pace, or any other permit for that matter that we would have to wait, apply for and go through the processes. And just, or just a study, like the water quality study, that just takes time. So we can be moving a lot of parts of design, then we got to stop. But we were never at a point that I would say, we're ready to trigger this thing and get going. We weren't even close. There's a lot of work that goes in behind these, and you can't just say, well, we, we, we deliberately stopped this project because it wasn't important. But there was times that this project was being held back because of studies, that we had other projects that we had Prynn and Newhoff employed in, because of their expertise for the project, they then, we'd have them focus on that to move forward. But it wasn't a deliberate, no, they're not important, we're going to put them off the side. That don't work that way.
Okay. I think that's it. Questions?
I don't have anybody in line. It's the first time in a while. Nope, we filled it. Commissioner Coleman, thank you.
Just real quick, from my understanding, so the, so our obligation to meet the court's lake level and the liability of it going over and causing flooding, I can put myself in the position of, you know, living on a lake and seeing, you know, very high levels and being worried, is this going to flood my house and, and cause 20 grand worth of damage that I have to pay for, which now, you know, given inflation, you know, five years later, it's probably 40 grand worth of damage. And those costs, you know, are just as impacted by the construction costs we're seeing in the project. So, but is there that assessment of risk by the residents of the district, is there any, any alternative for them to take on that risk? Like?
There's really not when there's a court order. It's, it's really, and I wouldn't even feel comfortable, you can't contract around a court order either. The other commissioners' comments about contempt. Let's say every single property owner in the district wanted to say, I don't want to follow the court order. Well, the court order has been, been entered. You can't really contract. So I, the answer to that is no.
So even if we walked around with a, a note that said, "I indemnify, you know, the Board of Commissioners for any property damage," and every single lake owner signed that, that, there's no mechanism for that to transfer with a project? and every single lake owner signed that, that, there's no mechanism for that to transfer with a property sale.
I would, I would, I would never recommend doing that, especially in indemnification from an individual. They're all, it's only worth as much, you know, essentially as, as they are worth too. And there could be significant damage if there were, you know, a high water event that, that caused property damage.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else that has a question, comment, discussion? I'm sorry, do you? Oh, did you have anything, Commissioner Ponstein? Yeah, we, you passed up earlier. I don't think we're gonna, I don't think they're gonna get the luxury of being excused until we've taken action on this. Sorry, guys.
It's, it's been an interesting morning. Uh, I want to thank all the people that sent the emails. Well thought out. Thanks for coming today to voice your opinion. You know, the only thing I have to say is, you know, the word mankind, you know? Man has thought that they can control every single thing that we've been blessed with in this world. We have spent trillions of dollars on what we call infrastructure. I think the people from the lake that spoke, uh, made a real valid point. And it's been reaffirmed by the people that speak. I mean, we've done everything with watersheds to get rid of water. We build malls, the water's gotta go somewhere. We build subdivisions, the water's gotta go somewhere. And we build schools and businesses, and the water's gotta go somewhere. And man somehow thinks that we can control this. Well, when you get wa- water away from one watershed, it goes to another. And, uh, you know, I've heard the term that, uh, you know, these folks live in a bathtub. Well, what I see coming out of our storm sewers, uh, I don't think they live in a bathtub, they probably live in a toilet. And it's a toilet that's been draining other districts for decades. And now our solution is, we're gonna build another drain to solve problems that other drains continue. Now, it's kind of late to set the clock back and rethink about land use, how we develop, how we store water, how we protect other water districts from other water districts. You know, I, I think something's gotta be done. We got a court order. You know, I always say that the problems with court orders is that we have a legislature in Lansing and in Washington that, uh, believes that they can't do anything. And this may be the one time that maybe we need the legislature to act on this. Because this whole story of high water isn't so much dealing with lakes. It's all the dams that were failed. That's how the new emphasis came into play. Once again, that was mankind thinking that they had an idea, and then decided that we could just let these dams go until they burst. So I think the tr- real big thing is, you know, something's gotta be done. You know, the work's been done. But at the end of the day, I'm smart enough to know that these folks are making a good point. And they're taxpayers, you know? We are told that when, if we don't do this, all these ramifications, liability of the county. You know, I've been at this for a long time. If as a county, we have risk management funds, we have liability policies, we have everything on board that we, we pay with taxpayers' money to protect us from an incident that we're a taxpayer would sue or something would happen. We can give millions out to whitewater to try to restore water. And we've given millions out to numerous projects, parks, sporting complexes, tourism. I think this is one example, you know, I, I, I don't want to just blankly pay it off, but if this was ever a time where the county would cover a cost and then have zero interest, just, just think of the benefit. We'd still get the money back. So we're not collecting interest that we collect now on taxpayer money. We would be saving taxpayers' money. We wouldn't need bonds. We wouldn't need bonding attorneys. We wouldn't have bonding fees. We wouldn't have to sell it on the market. We would pay for it ourselves, and then have these folks, who I think have had a burden, put on them because of the growth that's gone around this place. You know, I don't think it's asking too much that it's a zero percent interest payback. Because it just, it doesn't benefit them. It's benefits the people before them that were developing all the watersheds around them, which is negatively impacting them now. And that's the most important thing. So is there a need for it? Yes. But if the burden's gonna be put on these taxpayers to, uh, pretty much foot the whole bill, if that's how Michigan and the county runs, then once again, you know, it's time for the legislature to act on, on these watershed districts, and maybe some more of the, you know, responsibility. Because when growth happens, state government benefits, county government benefits, city benefits, townships, and so on. So, uh, if, if the vote today includes this, uh, uh, interest on a payment that they have to make to solve a problem created by the greater good, uh, I think, uh, I think my friend here, uh, did it. You know, that three million borrowing cost over twenty years probably adds another two million. I mean, that's outrageous. I mean, when, when we as a county are sitting on millions of dollars in our fund reserves and our CIP funds and all of that, that we can't peel a little bit off, that we will get paid back, but just without interest. But that interest off that money wasn't created by us. It was once again created by the taxpayers that pay their taxes. And I think for some of these folks, the stories and the emails I've received, is that if one of these people cannot make that payment over that twenty-year period, the only ramification I've heard that we've got is that we're gonna take their house away from them for not paying fees and taxes. And, uh, you know, that's a whole nother story that I won't get into today, but, you know, those are my feelings. And, uh, I think you can draw where I'm gonna vote on this, but, uh, this is, this is a problem that isn't just a single lake. It's a problem for the county, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Womack?
Thank you, Chair Green. Um, I, I wanna thank Commissioner Teal for her questions surrounding the tabling, as well as Commissioner McLeod. I didn't ask for the table. I, I brought it up, and I wanted to hear from my colleagues, and I'm just glad that we work as a team, and we really listen to each other, so I won't be looking to table it. I also want to clear up, when I mentioned the finance committees, I was studying some of the things that were done, um, historically through the years and not the last finance, uh, committee. Uh, just proud of the work that my colleagues are doing here. I definitely want to thank the Dean Lake Association for the work they've been doing. Ken Yonker, I want to thank him, and just want everybody to respect his work, because a lot of the questions I have have to do with the financing and the taxing. And I do know that the work that he's done is gonna help many people, people that aren't even born yet, so I do want to thank him for his work. I do want to let Mr. Yonker know that, um, in my community, uh, when it comes to leadership, I'm one of the few that took political science as a major, as, as I looked around the board in my community, at times it seemed like I was the only one. So I do understand we are a republic, and, uh, when we say democracy is kind of semi-quasi. Uh, so there are times that we do not go by what the public says. At the same time, there was a statement that, uh, people that are harmed by our inactions. And that's why I asked about the time on this. The time from twenty-one to twenty-five has harmed these residents financially, because now it went from one point one as an estimate to two point nine as a final. I don't know who said the county should fund the entire thing, but I do believe, as, uh, Mr. Poinstein, Commissioner Poinstein said, we have, uh, given millions away to some things that we don't even know are gonna come to fruition. We, we gave millions away, and our work on the sustainable park and almost went back to ground zero on that. I do believe, because of the time that it took to get here and that costing taxpayers money, I would hope we would be able to be partially, because a lot of the letters, some people didn't want to do it all, others were like, hey, we, we thought it might be one point one, one point five. So any money that we give towards this project because of our interest in this, and the fact that we could be sued for inactivity, anything that we could do to lower those costs for these, uh, taxpayers, I, I would be looking forward to seeing that. Uh, I also believe there is no individual benefit to a public park, that when people say this is just totally an individual, uh, benefit, I, I don't believe that. I also had a question, if it's, I'll, I'll just stick to comments if we can't ask any more questions, but I did.
Ask a question if you'd like, Commissioner.
Okay. If, if it is appealed, how long would the appeal process hold up this project? As we've been saying that this ninety days is a crucial time period for us to get this started. If they appeal, how long would that hold this up? Do you estimate? It could be staff or?
I, I'll attempt to answer, and then council can answer. I, I, I think it would be potentially until the court resolves that process.
Yeah, the chair, the chair is correct. It also depends on how many appeals. If there's one appeal for twenty-three thousand of two-point-nine million dollar project, it's not gonna hold the project up. If there's a lot of appeals, it, it could hold the, it could hold the project up.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yep, so that's basically all I had. I, I really, uh, also want to thank everybody that spoke of our colleagues. Let you know that I always look for a conversation, so I will say what I say, but then I close my mouth, open my ears. And, um, I'm just glad that we have everybody here to speak their mind. This is something that without any county support, without any state support, any federal support to this being a public park upon this lake, for people signing a petition that were told one estimate that came back three times what it was estimated for the time that it took for it to come to fruition, this is something that I could only support if there was some help from the county, state, or federal level. I don't believe that this government mandated insurance on one hundred and twenty-two residents is something that I could support. But just want to thank all of my colleagues for your input.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Vice Chair Burrow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We all live in different district, different, uh, drainage districts, uh, throughout the county. And this is not the, uh, last project that's, uh, coming to this board. We'd be setting a horrible, horrible precedence if, uh, we started paying for these projects, uh, throughout the county. We, we'd all be paying, uh, again, for, for different areas, different places that we live. The law is set up for a reason. Um, I was in a drainage district as well, and, and got assessed for that, uh, that project, uh, myself. So, again, the, the fact that the, the county would, uh, pay for this or at zero percent, I, I think, what a, what a dangerous precedence we'd be setting. There are projects, I was just talking to another commissioner today, they've got a large, large, uh, drainage, uh, district assessment that might be happening to them. Again, we're just gonna be, keep on going and going and going. So I think as we, as we have, uh, strategic capital, and we have these funds set up, that we want to use our money for, for cash on other projects, again, this is, this is not, again, this is not what we've done in the past, and again, I would, uh, highly, highly recommend that we don't start today.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burrow. Commissioner DeBoer?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would agree with my colleague, uh, Vice Chair Burrow, that I do not support any public dollars being used for this purpose. But I also, um, am trying to reconcile, um, a lot of things with this. Oftentimes, this is up here, when we make a decision, it's a decision between bad and worse. It's not a decision between good and bad. Um, and so I'm tempted to vote no on this. But if I do so, I realize that the people that bear the most risk is not necessarily, well, ultimately it's the county, but it's also those property owners that have, um, a lower elevation. And if I do vote no, I would love to, um, believe in your lake community that they would support those people who are negatively impacted. So I, I guess I'm just, I'm still trying to figure out which way I'm gonna vote, but at the same time, if this doesn't pass, I would, um, admonish the, the lake community to, um, realize who is bearing the risk on that lake level and what the fallout could be with that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Morales?
Thank you, Chair Green. Um, I want to just want to also say thank you to everybody who's made some comments, and, um, a lot of the information that was presented has all been very helpful. I shared with, uh, some sentiments with Commissioner Womack and Commissioner, uh, Ponstein, just regarding the fact that, you know, there's other worst things that the money has spent counting on, and three million dollars is really like a drop in the bucket compared to a lot of things. And I think ultimately because, and I also agree with, uh, Commissioner Burrow about the fact that this could set like a crazy precedent. And I'm just wondering if maybe this would, could be a catalyst for setting up a fund specifically for lake level management, since it is going to be an ongoing responsibility or liability of the county. Just putting it out there as an idea.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Morales. Is there anybody else? I don't have anybody on the list. I don't see anyone. Um, thank you. So I just have a few, um, comments, uh, briefly. First, I want to say thanks to, um, the residents who've come to share their, not only come this morning, but, um, came to the meeting at the, um, the Drain Commission, came, uh, that I was at at the extension, uh, the special hearing, came to the finance meeting a couple weeks ago, came to this meeting, communicated with me and other commissioners on the phone and via email and, um, in person, and we, we really appreciate that. This has been a very tough issue for me, uh, particularly because I have to balance two things that I care about deeply here. I happen to be the board chair, and I also happen to be the commissioner that represents, uh, the majority of the residents on Dean Lake. The residents, uh, of my district have elected me to, um, you know, serve them and do what's best for all of them, not just the, these folks that live on the lake, but all, everyone. Um, and my colleagues here on the board, who are elected by their constituents, have, uh, put trust in me to do the right thing for the Board of Commissioners and for the county. So, um, it's been a, a balancing act in that, uh, certainly there's a, a temptation to do things that might be considered special for, um, my neighbors. But also I have to balance what the board likes as a whole, and the precedent that was talked about and those kind of things. So that, it just, in a moment of being candid here, that's been a challenge for me. There are, I view there as no good options here. We've got a community on the lake that's split. Uh, nobody wants to pay this much. That's, that, that we all can agree on. About half of you want the project for less money, about half of you don't want it, um, at any cost. And that, that presents a very, um, a very difficult thing for us as a, as a policymaking body. We also recognize that there's been a lot of money that's already been spent, time put into this. We can't really go back and do nothing, because if we go back and do nothing, we then have to go back to court, rescind the lake level that we've established, send you all a bill for what we've already incurred, uh, and then you get a, a nice assessment for a number of years that, with nothing to show for it other than all this time and, and energy that you've put into it. Um, and that, that doesn't appeal to me. So I, I just, uh, I, I've been frustrated with the process. I'm not explicitly frustrated at any one group here. Commissioners are trying to do their job. The Drain Commissioner and, and the staff are trying to do their job. The residents are trying to look out for, um, their property and their, um, family and their investment. And I have no ill will toward people that do that. I understand it wholeheartedly. Um, but this process is awful. Part of it is this way the statute's written. Um, part of it is just the way the chips fall, um, when we're going through these. But I've, it's been a real, um, pain to go through, and I think, uh, we've experienced that as a group too. So, um, I'm inclined to, uh, to very reluctantly support this, um, motion today. If we don't proceed, it's gonna probably make things worse. Eagle will probably never let us do this if we don't do it now. And, uh, I think it's going to be in the long term, a, a greater benefit to, um, the people that live on the lake today and long down the road. But I hate the cost that it comes with, and I hate the position that we've been put in, um, as a board through no one's ill intention, uh, just the way that this has come out. So, um, that's all I have to say. I will ask for a final time if anyone has anything else. I will ask for a final time if anyone has anything else. I don't see anything. Oh, Commissioner Womack.
I do believe that when people say this sets a precedent, that it really doesn't, because how many projects are going to come through like this where we have a delay on part of someone, I don't want to say an individual, of course, but the process itself. There was a delay that caused this to go to two-point-nine million dollars. How many projects are we going to have where we have to take three million and split it beyond a hundred and twenty-two people? I think we'd have less people in here if we were splitting that among a thousand to three thousand people. So I just think Dean Lake is a very special situation. I didn't ask to table it. The only reason I was going to ask to table it was so we could have time to talk to staff, talk to different commissioners, to see if we'd be able to be the ones to loan them the money, to save them the money on the interest, or if we'd be able to put in a half million with all the funding, some partial funding, as I look at all the other projects. So I just wanted to be clear that I didn't think the county should pay the entire bill because it does benefit Dean Lake residents, even though it doesn't benefit them totally. I think they should have to pay some. I think a lot of them agree they should have to pay some, but I think any relief that we could have did as a government would have made this easier for me, and I do want to say I think it's a unique situation. It's also a unique situation because I know we were just coming out of the pandemic in 2021, so I know that Mr. Yonker had a whole lot of work that I saw that he was doing too. So I just want to thank him again for all his work on this. I'm not on some witch hunt like Yonker would stop this. I know if he could have did it the day before, the decade before, he would have done it for the safety of that community and their properties. I just do believe that when it comes to this taxation on a hundred and twenty-two people and the time that increase those fundings, that is a unique situation.
Okay, thank you. I should have said, is anybody else that hasn't gone twice would like to go, I'll allow that, but otherwise I think we've hit the limit on discussion here. I am going to ask the clerk to please call the roll. I would remind the group that we have not divided the question, and therefore this requires a two-thirds vote of members elect to, for passage. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Forty-three, Commissioner Boujack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burrow.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer.
No.
Faber.
Yes.
Halsted.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Morales.
No.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King. Peckla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Sparks. Stuck.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
No.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have fourteen yays, four nays. The motion passes. Resolution Forty-three is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate the discussion and the work that has gone into this, and appreciate the residents who came here to share their input with us today. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is public comment related to general county matters. If anybody would like to give public comment related to general county matters, please come forward, give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. I am not seeing anyone. Public comment related to general county matters, please.
Yes, yes.
We have your name and address, yeah. Well, I'm sorry, I just met you last evening, I forgot your name. Can you say the name once again, then?
Terry Gates.
Mr. Gates, yes, please, you have up to three minutes, thank you.
And this is really unusual that I picked this date because of a number of reasons. I am a lakefront owner, and we had Kent at our lake and talked about setting lake levels, and so I'm very invested into what just happened today, but also because of the timing of me being here, and I'm talking about climate change and what the future is going to be on lake levels. I personally have flood insurance on my house because I'm one of the lowest properties, but what I want to address is that currently Kent County experiences about eight days a year with temperatures exceeding ninety degrees. So the climate impact study that the City of Grand Rapids recently did as part of their CAP, Climate Action Adaptation Plan, projects that twenty-five years from now, this is a fact that came from study, that we are, may experience up to twenty to thirty-eight days a year over ninety degrees. Global warming is real, it's a scientific fact. In fact, December three, two thousand nineteen, the City of Grand Rapids adopted Resolution Number Eighty-nine, Four-Nine-Nine, officially recognizing climate change as a crisis requiring urgent action. The resolution committed the city to accelerating efforts to reduce greenhouse gases. There's a lot of county communities in Michigan and across the nation that are addressing global climate change. I have personally put copies of this book in the mailboxes of the Republican Commissioners here because it is a partisan issue, but climate change is not a partisan issue. It affects everybody. And the United Nations Intergovernment Panel on Climate Change says that with thousands of scientific consensus, human influence, especially from greenhouse gas emissions, is the dominant cause of global warming. It is unequivocal that human influence has warmed the atmosphere, the ocean, and the land. President Obama warned, there is no challenge that poses a greater threat to future generations than climate change. It's being denied at the federal level. They're trying to erase the words climate change, climate science, because of, I'm not going to go into it, but, so what's Kent County's role? You're a policymaking body. We need willpower. We need the county to take visible leadership, strengthening public awareness, fostering deep community engagement, building strong partnerships with local governments and grassroots groups. Together, we can make sure that Kent County is not only prepared, but leading the effort for climate change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There's a lot at stake.
Thank you.
And it's important.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment related to general county matters? Unless the Coleman delegation is going to make public comment, I don't think anybody else is here.
I don't know if he's got his mouth.
I know.
He's holding back.
I wouldn't say no. All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Ten, the Administrator's Report. Al, do you have anything for us?
Just quickly, the twenty-twenty-six proposed budget book is in your mailbox, and I'm able to read the room, so I'll hold everything else to my weak way up here.
God love you, Al, thank you. I'd like to just acknowledge very briefly under reports as we move there, I'll ask that we share some more information with the group, but I wanted to briefly acknowledge that Under Sheriff Brian Muir graduated from the FBI National Academy Session Two-Ninety-Four, which is a great accomplishment. So we'd like to probably have him in another time and acknowledge that for him in a special recognition, but Sheriff mentioned that to me this morning, I just want to acknowledge that. Brian was here earlier but had to leave because, you know, we've been here for four hours, so, but congratulations, Brian. Sheriff, please pass along our congratulations to Brian, we'll have him in to recognize him too, great accomplishment. Anybody else for reports? Commissioner Hennessy.
Briefly. The Senior Milage Review Committee met this week. Commissioners McLeod and Halsted are among the members, with many public members involved in the staff at the area agency, involved in the discussions as well. We had one million dollars more in requests than we had in money, it led to lively discussion, and the decisions and recommendations have been made, and they will be coming to us later for approval through our budget process. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else for reports? Reports, seeing none. Move to Agenda Item Number Twelve, miscellaneous. Commissioner Boujack. Commissioner Boujack cannot read the room.
Thank you, Chair. I hope you all learned from today's discussion that if you're interested in being a waterfront property owner, whether it's a lake or a river, that there's a cost involved in doing that, and it's just like a boat, break out another thousand.
I know I joke about the timing, but people have suggested we get rid of miscellaneous, I really don't want to do that because it's one opportunity for people to speak, so. Commissioner Ponstein was next, then Commissioner Faber.
I'm going to go first.
Were you next? I didn't see you.
I'm good. Go ahead.
Okay, Ponstein, then Coleman, then Faber.
Okay, I'll keep it brief so I don't delay Commissioner Coleman. So we always, in this part here about championships and everything, and I've got one here, it's not really a championship, but the Granville Public Schools have a, were enrolled in the two thousand twenty-five VEX-AI World Championships. They go by the name RoboDogs. I think we are blessed in a community in Granville that we just don't send one team in the upcoming playoffs to get into the championships. Sixteen teams would advance. I just want to give a big shout out to all the coaches, the parents that support this program, the businesses that support these programs. Of those sixteen top teams in the world, three of them were from the Granville Public Schools. Now, they didn't win the competition, but I think the feat that they did was noticed. All the judges gave the Granville teams the sportsmanship award, and I just respect these individuals and students that go out and not only compete at that high level, but also represent the community and greater Kent County in a very positive way, so my appreciation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and congratulations to the Bulldogs. Commissioner Coleman. Oh, yeah, we can clap, that's fine, you clapped. Coleman, boys, all right. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. If the rules had allowed me a third bite at the apple, I would have said this on the Dean Lake issue, but with great respect to Commissioner Womack and others who floated the idea of sharing some of the unfortunate costs of the Dean Lake issue across the county, I just can't help but express that if you think about what that means, it means that the young family that's, you know, below the poverty line in four-nine-five-oh-seven, or the senior citizen who lives in the trailer park in four-nine-three-one-five in my district, that we would be asking those people to help fund offsetting the cost of someone who lives in an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house on a lake. I think that's an embarrassing idea.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Faber.
Yeah, sorry, I was a little flat-footed earlier on the Burn State Crisis Intervention Program grant. The recipient of that grant is realism is loyalty. I talked with council and with Chair Green. I'm actually hosting a fundraiser for them tonight. I have no stake in them, but I just wanted in full transparency to disclose that, should have done it before the vote, apologies. And then yesterday night, a couple of us attended the Parks Matter event with Kent County Parks Foundation, Chair Green, Hennessy, myself. There's probably no greater project we're going to be working on as a board in the next couple of years, and so I really encourage everyone to get up to speed with that project. Possibly we could have a special briefing. The amount of ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings that we will be attending in the next eighteen months is astounding, and I really look forward to the momentum that we're building around the Greenway Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and your explanation on that vote is noted, and we, instead of making you abstain, thank you for being involved in a good organization, appreciate it. Commissioner Merchant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to wish a very happy birthday to our esteemed county clerk, Lisa Lyons. Happy birthday.
She got rid of the band three hours ago.
Would have been a good day to say you had an eye problem, can't see yourself coming in this morning. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I did not want to speak. I wish Mr. Boujack could have. We're at the room. I was ready to go home, but it just, and then Commissioner Coleman, he did speak in, it just when it comes to low-income communities, I represent a community and district that has been deemed some of the lowest income in the county, and if we really looked at our community and what I hear from my constituencies, maybe seventy-five percent of the things they see funded through the newspaper, they feel don't affect them or won't change their lives, and their priorities are a lot different than sometimes the federal government may see state and local bodies. So I just wanted to speak about that. I didn't want to speak about that. Also, I used to live on a waterfront unbeknownst to most people. I lived in Cascade on Burger Street when I came back from New York, on the Thorn Apple River, and when I came, it was kind of hauntingly because I didn't know, I noticed wasn't nobody outside on a hot day, like what's, you know, I was kind of like, what's going on? Good air conditioning out there, but one thing I found out, we had a correspondence to Kent County, and one of those correspondence also led to the belief that people on Dean Lake were so liquid and fluid, and I just probably would have bought into that more if I didn't live on Burger Street, if I didn't know that behind these closed doors, there's women that struggle with domestic violence. There's kids out there in Cascade that were struggling with the opiate problem back there before I even heard of it in my community. There's people who have to, to fit in, have to drive the best cars, wear the best clothes even when they can't afford it, until they can't afford it anymore, and you see people moving out of the neighborhood and giving false reasons on why they're leaving, so I just know there's a lot of struggle going on in America in a lot of more locations than just mine, and I'm just somebody still that's a stickler when I look at, you know, dollars and the chance for people losing their homes. But I just want to thank Chair Green, though, for also bringing up some of the facts that I can respect the votes that were yes, even though I was a no. I just think that we have a very loquacious board that's very good at putting out the facts and everything, so everybody could make a judgment that they held close to their representation of our taxpayers. So thank you, Chair Green, once again, for conducting such a great meeting, even under fire.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else for miscellaneous? Okay, I see none, I have a brief, two very quick housekeeping. We obviously canceled the animal shelter tour, which was supposed to be two hours ago. I've been informed that we're going to probably look to do that at the end of the summer or early fall, after we get through our work sessions on the budget, so we'll still be doing that at some point. There's also pizza, I'm told, because we like to feed you guys when we work this long. With that, I will call on Commissioner Halsted for a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I just got a correct Fisher Womack on the poly side, he's playing the only poly side major, nineteen eighty-two, a Quinones College.
I said in my neighborhood as leader. You're a Fisher. All right.
The Chair is also a poly side major, he regrets it. Please-
I'm in on my street.
Mr. Chairman, I call to adjourn.
That's a good one.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries, we are adjourned.